Six o'clock, let's get started. Uh, roll call Kramer.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Coontz, here. Harris.
Here.
Service, here. Very nice. Thanks everyone else for showing up today. Thanks Suzanne for coming down and, and talking to us. Um, review of current agenda items, so in light of, of her, uh, being here and then also we wanna give Neil a chance to balance if he needs to. We need to adjust the agenda a little bit. So, uh, first item will put Suzanne's discussion up. Uh, second item will be TIF two. And then after that, everything will fall in the order, um, that it shows on there. So, um, I guess I'd, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept that agenda order. And then the addition of, of her discussion, so I make the motion. Aaron, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, uh, very good. Any conflict of interest, um, during any of the agenda items, um, please declare that. And right now, uh, so that brings us to item eight, and that'll be, uh, Suzanne.
You don't understand?
Uh, if you'd like, yeah.
Okay. It's easier to see.
Awesome.
Um, this will be pretty quick. I'm not sure how much you know about the situation, but you've got the ARPA grant. Um, and you, and I understand there's a payment that you'd like to have made to, um, to the contractor. Before we can disperse any of the ARPA funds, we need evidence that the seventy-six thousand dollars that was on the application, um, that the state matched was spent first. And from what I hear, you're not entirely sure what happened to that ARPA money, and that's, that happens, it's not surprising. The good news is, we don't really care if it's that ARPA money. It just, we need you to spend seventy-six thousand dollars that is not ours first before we can disperse any of the ARPA money. We're hoping you have local cash available that you can tap into, otherwise, um, you might have to look at other options. If you cannot come up with the seventy-six thousand dollars to spend first, then we will have to reduce your ARPA grant by that amount because that, that particular amount was matched by the state. Everything else will stay more or less untouched. You are looking at a five thousand dollar reduction based on the bid that came in, because it came in lower than expected. So, a five thousand dollar reduction in the ARPA grant, the way it stands, if you can come up with the seventy-six thousand dollars. Otherwise, you're looking at eighty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
So what I'll say is, is that they've already spent over that. The mobilization was a hundred and ten.
Okay.
So they've kind of already gone past that amount, so it'd just be when we request reimbursement of what we're spending for the Leavine Expansion, she's gonna reimburse, approve reimbursement from the ARPA grant minus seventy-six thousand. So then that accounts for the contribution from the town. So let's say if we ask her, I remember what that request was. It was over that. It was like a hundred million.
Two?
Is it two hundred? Hundred and two, whatever. So then they'll just give us that, the difference in our first draw request, and then we've met, we've met our obligations.
Yeah. The general, our Black Hills Council would, would document that in the ledger then, so that I could tell where, where that money went. Um, and then we'd be good to go.
Terry, did you have any questions on maybe something that Suzanne could help us?
Well, and I was just doing some research on, cause this is like back when COVID, and then when this came through, so what I had found. Yeah, cause I had just left the county, um. So in some information I'd found online, it said for communities that were fifty thousand or less, that the funds would be sent to the state to distribute to the local communities.
Uh-huh.
So is this?
Uh, that would be my guess is where that seventy-six thousand dollars, that, that pledge came from.
Came from.
That is completely separate from D A and R.
So was this seventy-six like something the town was just gonna match out of their own funds?
It's something that, uh, for whatever reason, when the application came in, uh, the town thought that
That they could come up with that?
That the state was gonna give them, uh, the seventy-six thousand from ARPA. Cause all of the towns got a whole bunch of it at that time.
Right, right.
I don't personally know where that, who that came from, which agency that came from.
Cause I went back and looked at like our payments from the state, and we never got anything in that amount.
Yeah, and depending on the community, sometimes it comes from the county, um. Again, Black Hills Council might know a little bit more about that. They might have been involved in the original award in the first place.
Okay.
I know I wasn't, so I don't know.
Well, I do have a big file in my office I found now, so I can, I'm trying to go through that.
All I know is, is in the grant that we gave you, that any local pledge has to be spent first. And that's in Article four of the grant.
Okay.
So, Terry, maybe we could get a motion from the board that we're gonna, that the town's gonna meet that obligation from the application, so Suzanne knows right now that the town intends to do that. And then what we'll do is, I'll work with Terry to go back into the accounts to see, cause that would've been dropped into the general fund, that money from, that was ARPA money back in twenty-two. And so, and it probably came from a different agency than D A and R. It was through the federal government to the state, to the local. And if, if worse comes to worse, uh, the general fund would just have to reimburse the sewer fund for that difference in amount, so that everything's accounted for. But at least she'll know, so she, she can go back and tell them that they, that they don't need to reduce our grant by anything, cause the town's gonna meet our obligation.
Except for that five thousand.
Except for the five thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have no problem, uh, meeting our obligation, but I don't think we can take any action on it tonight because we didn't get it on the agenda in time, so.
Correct.
Uh, we'll make sure to put that on the next week's agenda. So technically, this is a special meeting, and our normal, regular meeting's gonna be on next Tuesday night.
Okay. I, I, I understand. I just wanted to make sure you knew that if you do submit the payment, it'll be significantly less than what you're expecting.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you coming down. Does anyone have any good questions for, uh, Shannon?
I do have questions. So, you're saying we've already spent at least approximately a hundred and ten grand, and that had to have come out of the sewer fund already, right?
Well, that was, we just spent that, and that was after we got our six hundred thousand dollar loan from Bank West. This is back from twenty-twenty-two.
Right, but it can be applied as showing that we've spent at least that much from that one payment, right?
Yes.
And it's out of the sewer fund, so can we not just submit that?
We can.
Check register shows the account number it came from with the paying request?
Yep.
Yeah, cause we just did that last month, so. Just earlier this month, actually.
But then when we ask for it to draw from the grant to replace that money in our sewer fund, seventy-six thousand of it's gonna be missing, cause they're only gonna replace
Right, but she's only worried about her seventy-six.
She's good.
So we don't really need a motion for her to find
No.
Or for her, for us to find our other seventy-six, right?
Correct.
So.
Correct.
So I think that's just a directive to, yeah, use that one large payment, because that's gonna cover what we need to get the seventy-six back, and I don't think there's other than a directive to use that one.
Right, so we shouldn't need a motion next, next meeting anyway.
I mean, that just kinda complicates things, other than for Terry to kinda research where our lost money or how.
All right, does anyone have any other questions for Suzanne? Linda?
I wanna know, um, what, all the different agencies that that money could've come from?
I don't know. Um, I have no idea. All, all I know is that the federal gave, government gave a big chunk of ARPA to the state legislature, and they said, here's a bunch that's going to D A and R, and that's what we're administering. The rest of it, I honestly don't have the slightest idea what happened to it. It's, uh, yeah, it, it came to the state, so it would be the governor's office and the legislature that allocated it, not us.
Okay.
And that Black Hills Council might have something?
They would have a better idea about how the ARPA. When the, when the ARPA payments came through, we honestly had no idea how they were working. We just think we were matching people's payments when they came in to us for funding.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I guess we're done.
Okay.
All right, thanks Suzanne.
Thank you.
All right, let me know if you need anything, and, uh.
Yes ma'am.
Oh, I have a quick question. Does she have the pay app form request that she needs?
Yeah.
Get that, okay.
We're working on it, it's up.
Okay.
Cool. I'll keep an eye out for that, and I'll get her paid.
Awesome. Okay, well, we appreciate you coming down for that, and, uh, so let's move on to, uh, the TIF two, um, discussion, which is gonna be preceded by a quick, uh, presentation by, uh, Neil Putnam, and he is the, what is he, the town planner for Benish? And so, since we work with Benish, he's also our, uh, on-call town planner. And so, um, this is his presentation.
Yeah, this is, uh, thank you again. It's good to see you all again. Greetings from East River. I think the, the nice warmer weather. So, um, a little bit, I just was kinda put together a quick slideshow here of some of them, uh, where, that we've done in Mitchell, just to kinda give you a little bit of a variety, um, so that even when you're approached with the TIF district, you kinda see that it's not necessarily one type of project, so. I'll just give you some examples, stay there, and I'll give you a little bit of some background on what a TIF district is and what it isn't. Um, a little bit on the TIF process, um, which you would be involved with pretty extensively if, if you would. And then I'll just open it up for any questions and answers to that, so. Okay, go ahead. Here's one, that it, by the interstate, if you're ever driving through Mitchell, you probably know it's Cabela's. So that was a TIF district, we did with Cabela's there. Um, and as how it happened with Cabela's was after the fact, they were having a, they were expanding some other parts of the area where it says Culvers and Hampton Inn and all those types of things, all kinda came in later after the fact. You know, the TIF district to help fill that, fill that in, so. But that's, that's probably the most prominent one, is, guys, we Mitchell, you tell, that's one of them.
And it was just for that one?
It was started off, actually, it wasn't TIF, the Culver, or the, wasn't, it was as, other, the other stuff, people started popping and deciding, hey, we wanna be near Culvers, we wanna be near Cabela's and so forth, and so. So when Culvers came in and the Ham, or the Holiday Inn Express, and then the hospital came in over on the other side, which is a tax exam.
Expanded the TIF, or was
It just was.
Part of the original boundary?
It was part of the original TIF, and then they started it because we needed more water and sewer to cook, to fill in for the, those other stores to come in, so. That's most visible one in Mitchell, that you probably, if you
Can I ask one more question? So that was undetermined when you started the TIF? Or were you developing it as for someone was going to come in?
What happened is we had developed, Cabela's came there first. They were out there all by themselves for a long as time. And then what happened is as time came up with them, they were trying to do some evaluation, and then Spruce Street, the street to the south, all of a sudden it started to pop with some other buildings out there. So next thing you know, that's when they started wanting water and sewer to go across. So then we went back and put the whole TIF district in.
So did you have to amend it, I guess is what I'm asking?
No, it came, it's just a subsequent one. It was just, it wasn't, Cabela's beat, beat the TIF. TIF came after Cabela's.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. If you're in Mitchell and there's the top there is the Highland Travel, or the Hampton Inn, and then the Comfort Inn, and that's our conference center that is owned by the city of Mitchell. And then the parking lot that's in front of that is also owned by the city of Mitchell. Reason this one is kinda creative was, I remember we were walk, working, trying to crunch the numbers of whether the property taxes would generate enough to offset the cost of the conference center and the parking lot. It didn't. It would, it didn't come hand out originally. We just thought, okay, how would you have, how do you come up with the, there? So what happened there to help fill in the gap, those two hotels adopted a bid tax, two dollar bid tax on their hotels. So they were, had that to help finance that TIF to kinda cover up the shortfall. So that, just reason I mention this one is that it's kind of, you don't, sometimes in ready-to-break a project work, can't, TIF may not necessarily be the one solely to do it, so you might have to come up with another revenue source. And so that's the reason I brought this one to attention, so. Go ahead. This is one I am not as familiar with. It's just, this is the most recent one in Mitchell. Mitchell, last time I read their minutes, they're TIF number forty. And this one, what it is, is this, we had a developer come from California and bought that building. It's a huge western building. Beautiful historic building, but it just lacks a lot of disrepair, a lot of windows were caved, you know, broken and, and so forth. But it has a lot of historic significance. They had some of the ghost signs in there, like doctors' offices and, you know, lots of those historic, uh, pictures, things that you see on glass windows a lot of times. And so, what it is, is to help pay for theirs, he's putting money, he's gonna put an Italian restaurant on the main floor, and apartments on the rest of the floor. And so, I also helped them to, they were a little short too, to help get some historic preservation funding for them, to help offset some of the expenses as well. And they're using that to, to fill, to make a parking lot for downtown, there. So that's the public property that they're using for. Okay? Okay, now, these are a couple of the, uh, these are the residential ones, a couple of, this was Pebble Beach Subdivision or, like, I'm pretty familiar with this area, cause I live in the subdivision. Uh, this is one where they just, uh, we did the water and sewer and streets and so forth. And now, I, some places like Sioux Falls or perhaps Rapid City is, they, you, you, they laid out a master plan, about a hundred lots in there. And it came out, they didn't quite come out, where we did those, and they just plotted them and developed them in phases, one block at a time. So the reason is, is we can't, we can't, in Mitchell, for example, we don't develop that fast, where you could just flat out a hundred some lots and think you could do that. So this is an example of what they did, is they kinda just phased in one, one at a time. And now it's whole.
So when did that one start?
Uh, I'm thinking around twenty-ten is at that time, is about that time.
Is all the building completed?
All, but about, maybe about three or four lots. But that's, that's for single-family residential total, to, to all single-family. And this is another residential one, when this one had a mixture of single-family and some multifamily housing in it. It's called The Woods, and this was on the east side there, and now also I've just found out that they're gonna have a commercial property on that big green spot on the top where it's empty, they're gonna have a commercial building going up on there, cause that's First Avenue, is that First Avenue used to be the highway in the Mitchell before the interstate. So, so if you came in, there, you cut through the city of Mitchell at that time, so that's reserved for some type of, I think they're gonna do some type of like office, professional office type of building or something there that's kinda blends into the neighborhood. But that's multifamily and single-family. Okay? This was the very first TIF district in Mitchell, back in about ninety-eight. I was with the county at the time when they adopted this one. And this, this is over on the west side of, of Mitchell. Um, graphic packaging is, they make boxes for like, if you ever swan ice cream and those, it's one of the biggest customers they have, so they, they do, they make boxes there. And so all those buildings, we put the whole campus, so to speak, in the TIF district, and then subsequently, some of the businesses through the south of there, um, came online and helped pay for the TIF district well, well before the twenty years was up. So those are just some examples that I, just to throw you, just some different ideas, so it makes one song. I think, go ahead. So what is TIF district, basically, is, yeah, what, what is this place? An economic development tool that localities can, both counties and municipalities can use for economic development or community development and so forth. And what they're not, it's not, it's not a property tax break per se, because it's, they still pay the same rate of property taxes. So basically, well, how this would work is, what you would do is you would identify within a project plan, so I'm gonna kinda overlap into the process a little bit. What is TIF district is, is you develop an area that you've identified as what you want for, uh, boundaries. You establish a boundary, you know, and it can be, it's that boundary's generally legally described. And then what happens is that, and that is your, any activity that happens in that subsequently that gets developed would be, is the increment. So the part of, most of the time, the property is bare land, so it's just, that establishes the base, base value. Sometimes you already, you already have a building that's in there, but that, I mean, just cause you can have buildings on a TIF district that's already there. What happens then is, uh, there's a, the, uh, exercise that both the Department of, Director of Equalization and the Department of Revenue do to help establish what is the base. They kinda, they, they establish, okay, what is this property worth as of right now, as the TIF district is formed? So any, so, so I just put it this way, I put it, let's say you have a hundred thousand dollars worth of property, that's a base value. Now you put in another two hundred thousand dollars in improvements, now the property's worth three hundred thousand. What happens is then, the first hundred thousand is the base, that'll, that property taxes get spread to the various taxing entities. They get a, I'm not sure exactly how, how, I've been on the D V E S O N S for a while, but I think, did you usually send two notices?
What do you mean two notices?
Two assessment notices? Oh, okay. Cause I think in Mitchell, what they used to do is they would send one notices to the base value and one notice to the TIF value, and they separate them out, so then the reason is, so then they pick it up that doesn't, those, those funds get diverted to the bond or a note. So, that's what it is. It's a, it's a tool that is, can be, can be very helpful in a community that's, was looking for development, so go ahead.
Is that picture, that picture you had up there, is that from downtown Mitchell?
Yeah. Yeah. Is it familiar with the place?
Over forty?
It's quite growing quite a bit, hasn't it?
Yeah, it has.
Over forty TIFs just?
Yeah, they're at number forty. Last I read the minutes, they were at number forty.
And that's within twenty-seven years?
Yeah, 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 like I said, within my time.
So they had multiple of them going on and?
Yeah, I had about, I was probably involved in at least two dozen of them in my time, with the, in different varieties. So creating it, I wanna, let's talk a little bit about the process. Okay, there's two important documents that will come through the process. One is called the project plan, which we've talked about, that, when you were talking about the last TIF district, we were talking about. But it's a project plan, and what that is, is I'm just gonna read you the statute real quick. It says, shall, is the kind, the number, location of all proposed public works improvements within the district. It's an economic feasibility study. It is a detailed list of all the project costs. It's a fiscal impact that shows the impact of the district both, until, both, until and after the bonds are repaid on all entities levying taxes on the property within the district, and a description of methods of financing of all the professional costs and time when related costs or monetary obligations are to be incurred. And then no expenditure, no expenditure may be provided for in the plan more than five years after the district is created unless an amendment is adopted by the governing body pursuant to the statute. So those, it's, basically, I would, just, I have always felt like the, the TIF doing the project plan is like a puzzle. You gotta get to put the pieces together. It's basically, it's the who, why, what, where, and how of this is gonna work. You're gonna, okay, where's the location? Who's gonna be the players? How do they propose, are they gonna pay for this? Who's gonna be holding responsible for this? And those types of things, and maps, lots of maps and calculations. And then normally, there would be like an amortization schedule, which shows, it would compare with, okay, just like when you're buying a house, you would say, okay, you're gonna pay X amount of property taxes per year, because it's a guess. It's basically, it's a guess based off of the information we know now, because levis change and values will change. But the base value will never change. The base value will always be the same. But because the levis may change from year to year, and the values of the property may change from year to year, that, so you're just trying to, kinda speculating based off of the most current one. So, that's why a project plan, yeah, is, was there. Uh, within the project plan, a little bit more on the expenditure side of it, because you, obviously, it's property taxes, you know, it's the sole on the revenue side, or again, or if you have another revenue source to offset, TIF doesn't generate enough revenue for you. Um, but then the, the items that are usually in the costs are capital cost, financing is included, so like all the interest rate, if the interest, it's on the financing would be included as an expenditure. Professional service cost, that would be evolved in that, such as our fees, legal fees and things of that nature. Imputed administrative costs, that's just if the city decided they wanted to charge a fee for a TIF district, that would be built into the cost. And then payments of grants, if there's a grant, that, so that's, it tells you a little bit more about the cost. So what happens is somebody will, will probably generate a project plan for a TIF district. That project plan will also, so as you get presented to the, it actually goes, by statute, it says it goes through the planning commission, but in your case, you don't have a planning commission, so it obviously would go through the city, or board trustees. You would hold a public hearing. The public hearing has to be, you have to notice the public hearing no less than ten days and no more than thirty days prior to your hearing. And a notice must be sent to all the taxing entities within the TIF district, and, and including the school board, to, to get a public notice, or to get a notice that you're gonna hold a public hearing at such, in such a time, in such a date. So they, they all have that chance to comment on that as well. So, then what happens is, if you, if you adopt the project plan, you're also adopting, you define the boundaries. You're adapting the map about, that would be within that. So you say, you hereby establish the boundaries of TIF number two, three, no, this, and so forth. Now, there's also another agreement that's probably the most important one, is after the project plan, is what's the developer. You have what is called a developers' agreement. What that does, is that's more specific between the municipality or the county and that individual developer. It holds that individual developer responsible for, for example, if the increments come in a little lower than anticipated for that year, they have to op, pay the difference. Or if it comes in more positive than that year, they have to use the overage to go pay, pay to the, that's just an idea. That's how we've used to, that, that one. Because if it comes in higher, great. If it just goes back into the box and pays it off that much quicker.
I mean, as, as it's being paid, right in the amortization, each year, that's considered.
Right.
Okay, and is that, is there a statutory reference to that?
I'd have to look it up.
That might be something, cause one thing about this is a town can negotiate things in,
Right.
in addition to statutory requirements. And I'm not aware that that's a statutory requirement, that if the developer, if the, if the TIF district makes less, that the developer has to cover it that year.
No.
That with, how the developer covers his butt, um, and the towns as well consequently, is that any, any financing mechanism that the developer obtains, um, he has to do that, be wise enough to, work with a bank that'll agree not to have, not to require payments be made until the TIF money starts to flow in. Bank West has done several of those with us, and, and the people, uh, I don't know if they are doing them as much anymore or not, but, the, uh, it's very, very critical to make sure they're structured properly, so that they stay solvent. Otherwise, it puts the developer in a, in a default position, which is the last thing you want, cause that does reflect well on the TIF, well on the town. So that's what we're, that just comes in.
Right, right, right. And just, I was just mentioning that, that's what we've done in our developers' agreements, just to have them, but just, I think that's just, I don't know if there's a statutory, it's just a practice that we've done.
Okay.
And it seems to be, seems to be valuable to them, you know, and in some cases, we've had them waive, um, I don't know, Terry, do you, you guys, you have the discretionary formula? Okay. In some places, like Davis and County does, is they, they make them waive the discretionary formula in order if they're gonna be in a TIF district, which is that, basically what that is, is that's a, a break that's given to commercial and resident, see, refresh my memory, it's not residential.
Usually just commercial, yeah.
Just commercial and A, right?
And they do, I guess, when you're
Yeah, I can't remember, but anyway. So, but that's just one, one thing you wanna kinda keep in mind, because if, you know, so that's why, I've always been of the opinion that more property that you can put in the boundary, that you think might be developed, like in those cases where I told you about the Cabela's, you don't know, you're adopting the TIF of what you know.
Right.
You don't know, you know, but if something happens in there, you, you generate more, besides, all of a sudden, that's why sometimes it's, it's, it's worthy, or it's worth the time to kinda draw, take out a little bit more property than you think.
Quick question on that. So if you include more property, is there a downside to that?
No.
Other than, I mean, there, so there is no downside?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The reason for it is because it's just sort of like you didn't know, all of a sudden you're, you know, let's say you, uh, I look at it like you're building your house, and all of a sudden you add another addition to your house, and you're adding a little more, more value that you didn't anticipate. You know, now your house is worth a little bit more, but you're, you know.
But in, in no way will any part of the TIF be overextended in some way because we incorporated too much land, right?
No, no, because we're just establishing, because the base value will be just established, so. What happens, now I've been involved in a couple of them in Mitchell, where, the one thing you gotta keep in mind though, when you're dealing with property taxes, you're always a year in the rears. So that first year is tricky, because you're not expect, because you're paying taxes a year behind. So you're gonna have no increment on year one, because you're, you're already, because you're off of the year.
And year two typically isn't all that great either, because you're waiting for some growth to happen. So about year five, you're gonna see some start, see some easy revenue.
Right, and so that statute that I read you about the five years, that's usually what happens, is usually that, I think they put that there, it's kind of so, okay, this thing is, what's the first five years gonna look like? That way, you could do one or two things, and I've done, I've been involved in a couple of them in Mitchell we came in, is we went back and amended it, saying, well, we didn't anticipate, the growth isn't gonna be what we thought. So we're gonna amend it, make, but you go, to do an amendment, you go through the same process as you did the first time, the notice and so forth. So, cause that's why if you wanna go the first five years, is you're very critical, there's no, okay, is this pattern gonna work or not? So, that's kind of how that works, so. I think that's, yeah, no questions.
As to, as to the financing of these, the TIF, however, between, the agreement between the developer and the city, and the town, there's a scope of interest that can be paid out of the TIF proceeds. And it must be dedicated, right in your line items of costs in the project plan, that this TIF covers the interest on this project up to nine percent per annum, or whatever that might be. I've always used nine percent, had for years, and a lot of, Rapid City has for years too, because even when we had three and, three to five percent interest, people remembered, hey, you can have more than nine percent interest sometimes, even though we haven't seen it in twenty years. Well, here we are, folks, you know, we're back nine plus for commercial. So you always wanna make sure you have plenty of space in there to allow the TIF to pay for adequate amount of interest.
Okay, I appreciate that, Kent. So, is it, does anybody have any like real basic questions on TIFs? One of the things that I wanted to bring Neil here to talk about was, in case anybody just wasn't clear on exactly how it worked, if, if you wanna kind of hear the explanation again. I know it's, it's kind of tricky when you first start getting into it, took me three or four hours on YouTube, just trying to figure out what's going on, so. Anyway, so is, does anybody have any other questions on just what, basic questions forum, or maybe even less than basic questions, like?
Right, well, again, I, I, like I said, I equate it, it's much like a puzzle, you try to piece this together, you're taking your, you're taking your revenue versus your expenditures. And it's sort of like, you do a little bit of accounting exercise, and see, is this, is this thing gonna pay off? If not, okay, one or two things, is you reduce your infrastructure cost somehow, or, because typically, the property taxes are pretty established, you pretty much kind of know what that property tax is you're gonna be. Again, but that's speculation, especially like on a house, or residential properties, you're gonna be four hundred thousand, you're gonna be five hundred, three hundred, whatever number. It's a spec, you know, unless you get that arranged very definitively right off the bat.
You're also speculating on whether that growth's gonna happen at all.
Correct.
That's, that's where the developer rolls the dice, because ultimately, regarding, regardless of how printed those terms are with the bank, if it starts to look like, hey, by the time those twenty years come around, you know, we're already at year seven, we haven't seen enough to even cover the interest. Then the bank's gonna get real nervous and maybe decide not to redo the loan. You gotta go find other sources to fund, take out that loan, that's totally the developer's problem. Now, under no circumstance will the municipality be held reliable or responsible for the, the debts incurred under the TIF.
Now, there's some, there are some that, that are strictly developer financed, one hundred percent, there are, they see those will happen too.
All mine were, the ones that I did, they're developer financed, however, I was so damn glad to get a great TIF, you know, decent TIF.
Yeah, yeah, because there is a reason for that, it's more the municipality part of it, because my understanding is that the board gets the bonding capacity as a, obviously.
Yeah.
So that's kind of that advantage, and, but the city is still a conduit, cause you, but the statute, because you're the, you have to be the flow-through conduit for the accounting of all.
Well, the question, is, is TIF two, I know the boundaries haven't, haven't specifically been established, but are, are any of those anticipated, boundaries anticipated to be of accounting as well?
No, my understanding, this is all, well, no, actually, my understanding is the, the TIF is only the part that has been annexed down. So there would be a hermosa city tip, or town tip.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Because you can't do a joint tip?
Oh, sure, we, we've done, we did county TIF districts inside the city limits of Mitchell. We've done that because what happened, at one time, the, the council was feeling a little tight on, because of this, so, there, but as long as the municipality offers it, with the county on the behalf of them, they put it right smack in the middle in the town, the county was a county tip.
Okay, yeah, Dan?
Thank you, I have one of many questions as we get into it, but, so what I'm understanding then is all we're going to be doing this tip for is Custer County only, none of the Pennington County? Cause we annexed on Jim's, the Pennington and Custer County segments of it. So is that whole parcel going to be in them boundaries of the tip?
Well, it sounds like, just when you just said it, that it, we're all, it's gonna try to completely stay within town boundaries.
Right.
Then you don't, then you don't have to mess with the county.
Right, the county's not involved whatsoever, we have to have a meeting today with Pennington County, your planner's office to say, talking about some other things, but we mentioned this as well. And, cause it's, it's just like it's, it would be the same as itself, cause it's all the city limits, so it would be, it's just, did it happen to me in Pennington County? And, it's pretty common, so for example, like Sioux Falls is in two counties, you know, Minnehaha and Lincoln County, and I know that I've run into that where. But if, if, would you wanted to expand it beyond that, then yes, then the county would have to be involved, you'd either do a county tip or annex more. One or, one or two things, the thing is to keep in mind that the tax increment district is, it's gotta be by whatever government entity is encompassing it. So either the city limits or the county, so it can be one of, there is no way of mix matching it, do you have?
But there have, I mean, if, if a, if it's in the jurisdiction of either or both, then either or both have a say.
Right.
Okay, so, and the reason the developer may choose to include part of the county, that'd be under the anticipation of being able to go to the county and say, okay, we need your blessing on this, here's what it is. And here's what the county might get out of it, there might be a stretch of road, might, whatever. However, where that can be helpful is that, because of a hermosa's size, depending on the desired amount of the TIF, the value, the taxable value of hermosa may not be sufficient to go over a certain amount, and that certain amount might not be anywhere near what a developer needs.
Right, right, right.
However, if you go outside the boundary and include that much of Pennington County or that much of Custer County, all of a sudden, you can take, you can consider the value of the county.
All right, so we're starting to get into kind of the discussion more on this, let's just stick to some basic questions for now, and then we're gonna, I'd like to do the discussion of the agreement under the motion. So Shannon, did you have a question in there?
Yeah, kind of a comment on the developer's agreement, and how the town can negotiate stuff, and I do recall that when we did that, it's funny, Mitchell did forty and, what'd you say, twenty?
Twenty-seven years.
And we did one in twenty-seven years. That never got the vote, anyway, it was important to note that the town can get reimbursed for any time spent on managing it, processing it. You know, not just the engineer fees that come through, and not just this or that, but whatever time, you know, so it had, it needs to be recorded separately, and that's another thing to include in that.
It's absolutely, it's, it's called, yes, provided for right in statute, administration fees.
Yeah, yeah, Mitchell does, the finance officer, tip fee to do a TIF district.
All right, Aaron?
I'm gonna, yeah, simple question, I think I wanna go with a real simple question is, how exactly is this going to benefit the four hundred citizens of hermosa we have today?
Well?
Very specifically.
Obviously, you would be able to get some additional housing if they're there, this is one financing mechanism to provide some, let me back up this. Just remember that all TIF expenses can only be used for public, public purposes. So in other words, the road, water, the sewer, a park, or anything that's public. Anything that's private, then that's, that's the developer, you're not paying for any of those. So for example, like, the city will pay for the water main, but the taps to their, that is not, that's the homeowner's and the developer's arrangement. So just to remember, is it, so it's a one way of encouraging development, where they would have an opportunity to take their property taxes, the but for, if it was but for this development, wouldn't even have a development. So if you wanna look at, what is your odds of having, okay, now you have a developer who's good, who's willing to come up here and do it to TIF district, and it's not giving him a tax break, cause he's gonna pay the same property tax rates as whether it was on there or not. So what it is, it's an economic development or community development, now whether you think it's a worthy project or not, that's probably more of a political question, that you'll have to ask yourselves, if you think that. I can tell you that in my experience, we've done residential ones, and the way we always looked at it, and I was, I was a school board member for twenty-one years, so I didn't know what you're talking about, at least on the school side. But I was always, always looked at it, the finding, school finances bodies, if there's any mechanism that we could get more kids in town, you know, more families, and has an economic development tool to do it, then so be it.
I'd just like to make a comment on that too, you know, encouraging development, in my view, will help us offset some of the infrastructure costs that we have to incur right now. And we'll be able to spread out those costs and, and rate increases and things along more, or across more rate payers, or more utility users. You know, cause right now, I mean, we're incurring debt, and we're having to pay out a lot, and, you know, that's, right now, that's falling on the backs of the four hundred people, and so.
That's, that's where I was going, is we just basically told them, your bills are going up.
Yes, sir.
And they're gonna say, why?
Well, it was.
And how can you stop it from happening, and can this help us?
Yeah, it's, right, you're, you're having, it's not, either that, or one of two things could happen, is obviously, if the city was so inclined, they would put the water and sewer themselves in themselves, and assess the rest of the taxpayers, well, this way, you're deferring it to the, for the, trying to get to some type of development off of the ground. And residential ones are more unique, probably, they're not as popular as probably the, they're just, they don't seem like the Cabela's and so forth, those are the ones that are there, but they do work if, if you have a pretty, like I said, a solid estimation on the property taxes and what you think is the rate of growth that you're gonna have. That's the tricky part, is it gonna be five houses, is it ten houses, is it, you know, you're gonna have to kind of take a little bit of a guesstimate.
Okay, let's do Shannon, and then Dan, and then one more question, if there is one, and then let's move on to the.
I think it expands our borrowing capacity by the end, because we've grown our tax base. So we're gonna have our extra property tax revenue, and the sales tax revenue that'll be coming into the town, because we're trying to get away from water, what, our business was selling water for so many years, and we can't depend on that anymore. So we need other revenue to come in. So by doing this, and the last TIF where we had commercial out front by the highway, or planned for, and residential in the background, you're kind of getting a two for one there, because you're letting the businesses come in, and people move in as well, so they're spending their tax dollars in your community. So you're bringing in that extra sales tax that we definitely need, so. I kind of like the pictures that you went through with Mitchell, I think they kind of are self-explanatory that would happen here. You know, every time they added something, whether it was a cafe, or historical, you know, restoration, or Cabela's. I mean, it all improved them as, as they grew, so. I, I don't think we should be worried so much about the maintenance that it's going to add, like when we adopt the roads later on, or having to take over the mains, you know, that we'll have to increase cost of maintaining those, but I think that's way more offset by the extra property tax, sales tax, and your borrowing capacity when you're looking to continue to grow.
Yep, Dan?
And I think that's a biggie, that's what I was gonna totally hit on, was it brings the town's value up. So when you go in for more infrastructure loans or anything else, you're going to increase that, it brings your schools up, where you're gonna have more school capacity, more school tax, more availabilities there, it brings more commercial in, so more commercial does wanna come in when they see the development. So it builds that portion of it up. And also, what, what Aaron is referencing too, is a huge part of it, is what we were gonna do with the Prestons out there, is express a higher tap fee, so that you can recover your funds, so that what we're adding for infrastructure onto our community, you can, with the developer, say, we've made room for you developers, we're expanding for your developers, we're setting our infrastructure for it. We don't wanna push that onto our citizens, so we're going to have a little higher user fee, we're gonna have a little higher cap fee, so that we can let that development absorb some of that, instead of our citizens absorb that. And Cal hit on that in a very good way, that that's what it does, it helps keep that down, pay them, infrastructure advances off sooner, so that you may be able to actually decrease your infrastructure fees as you go down the road, or maintain them at a level as the development comes, and then let the developers be the ones that take the impact of them new projects, whichever they may be in infrastructure, so. I think that's huge on every basic part of that.
And we might get a park.
Just a quick, just the TIF districts are twenty years, that is max, that's by statute, so that's the most, I mean, I've, we've done some with less than that, but it's twenty years is the max amount that you can have, so.
Okay, one more question, Linda?
Mine is kind of more of a comment, I was on the board back when the other TIF was put into effect, and I was one of the very negative people about TIFs. Because I just think it was, I used to think that it was really only helping the developer. And after twenty years of being here, and it didn't take that long, however, I have found that it is a great help to the city. As, as a town, a small town, a small city, you don't have the funding to put in the infrastructure on a hope that somebody's coming in. That if you put it in, somebody will come buy that property. You, you just, you just can't, we just don't have the funding to be able to do that. So this gives us the funding and the resources to be able to do that. Without creating a TIF and without having developers come to that TIF, there's no way that we could put in infrastructure out in these areas. So, just to let everyone know, I am for a TIF, I think it is the right thing to do for our small town. I think that, I didn't realize this before, but I think the fact that Cabela's came in without a TIF is, I mean, that's amazing, really.
Yeah, it came in after the fact.
Yep.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep, so.
Okay, well, so I guess I'll entertain a motion, either for adopting the agreement or against the agreement, if there's anyone like to make a motion. If there's anyone like to make a motion?
I would make that motion.
Okay, Linda makes the motion to what?
What is the agreement?
To adopt your. Linda?
Yes.
Okay. Linda makes the motion to adopt, do we have a second?
A second with a little more discussion, if that's okay.
Oh, yes, sir, yeah, we'll have plenty of discussion. I just wanted to get the bulk of the questions and answers when Neil was up there presenting, and then we're probably gonna have a pretty deep discussion about this, so.
Yeah.
A hundred percent, Aaron, yep. Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Would anyone like to start the, the discussion, if I could say it?
I just think the motion should be more specific as to.
To adopt the agreement?
If you read that in the paper, it says motion to adopt agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll kick it off, okay, so yeah, it seems kinda like, um, Linda actually touched on it a little bit. Developers coming in before, you know, we have the TIF, but we kind of put together these infrastructure projects, right, some two point four million dollars worth of infrastructure projects, and new developers that coming in would never have been able to start even thinking about anything along the lines of breaking ground, so we kinda did get our infrastructure set up to support these developers before they really, yeah, before they really hit the ground. So um, we're kind of, I guess this is a, this is a fit, as long as it's used carefully, because the end of TIF one was uncomfortable. And hopefully, the next one will be much more specific, much more clear, so that twenty years down the road, the people who sit in these chairs don't have to have a three-hour argument over how to deal with it at its time of death.
I'll remind them what we said.
I won't be eighty-one. Um, Dan?
Okay, now, my understanding from Anthony the other night, that it was only gonna include Preston's development in on this TIF, and not include Cary Hills, which, after talking now with Neil, and Neil, of course, has expressed that more is better, and, you know, in our original, I have not seen anything differently, but that was gonna be my negativity, is if it was only on the Preston development, and did not come in to Cary Hills two, since that's going to happen. And the reason being, is with Preston's development, we're not gonna be serving water. And so we're not gonna get the full advantage of that development, and we're only gonna get the sewer where Cary Hills, we're gonna get water, sewer both. And we're going to take the benefits off of that. And you know, it was mentioned, where with our first TIF, it was unfortunate that happened with Custer County Housing, as it did, and the failure that happened within the financing, and for us that were involved in that development, you know, we were asked as a town, and we didn't feel we were putting enough in for contributions, and Aaron hit exactly on what we've been looking for since seventeen, of building our infrastructure and ready for development. And that's why we went to DA and R to have the sewer line from Lazy R brought down to our lagoon, so that it was satisfied, that for the development of seventy-nine, as well as taking it to another level. That was our contribution to the TIF, but still kept us from the liability and protected our citizens in their developer's agreement. And that was huge on that part of it. The financing had to come from Custer County Housing, which, that's where the failures began to happen, and then the structure fell apart.
Right, Dan, let's, let's just keep the commentary on TIF two only, I mean, I know, I know you have a lot of insight into the history.
And I think then, my thing with TIF two, please, is, I feel Cary Hills needs to be involved in it, and that you have a structure already coming down our corridor, which correctly attaches all of that in the annexation, all the way through Hermosa Hills, all the way up to Custer County, Cary Hills, and able to accept all of that into the TIF, and help this TIF be a bigger, better TIF all the way through.
Okay, thank you. Shannon?
I'm, since you had mentioned you can have more than one TIF going at a time, and these are completely different developers that you're expecting to develop these areas, why not separate them, have two TIFs?
If I may, I think is that kind of a point Anthony made previously, that the differences in the way they're developing the land, the geographic separation, the different housing styles.
Different financing, different.
Completely different, so it would be appropriate for us to have two completely different TIFs to address that.
You can't have a little patch here, and a little patch there, and a little.
That makes more sense, because you don't know, the, you know, they each are gonna have their own developers agreement, each project their own project plan, and so forth. Unless you had it all at one time, I mean, you could, unless you're gonna have that be, they're gonna have the same financing and the same owner and stuff. That's where I think it just gets real tricky, if you're gonna have more than one, especially if it's a different owner.
I would expect them to be completely separate.
I don't know, maybe council could be better.
All right, Jen?
The important part about, I, 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 I see both points of that, and Dan raises an excellent point. Going back to the size of the TIF district, um, when you increase the size, you increase the opportunity for growth to occur within it. So, um, if, if Preston's is in there, and then Cary Hills is in there, and maybe a little extra here, a little extra there, where we think there might be some, some uh, uh, commercial growth, which is very important with these things. And if you can get that, and by the way, you don't need landowner consent to put their land under a TIF district, that's just something to keep in mind. And you don't need anybody else's consent, it's entirely up to municipality's decision-making and judgment. And, but if you do that, if you make it something other than what I understand is being proposed, now it's just Preston's, right? So, which is, which is, which is great, if, if everybody believes that that has a strong chance of success. However, let's say that the, if the homes in Preston Development are gonna be more expensive homes, let's say, there's certainly gonna be beer lots and all those kinda things. So that's gonna give some very solid longevity, even though it may take it a little bit longer to take off. It would anticipate that the Cary Hills one is gonna be quicker, faster, easier to build, therefore, you're gonna see revenues coming more quickly. And they really end up supporting each other. What I think needs to happen is both developers need to be on the carpet here and say, we want, we got this idea, we wanna do it. And we wanna do it together, and we understand that we, we have different mechanisms, but we also understand that um, as the money comes in, it gets applied to X, Y, and Z. It'd be a little more difficult to learn, to determine what gets applied where and how quickly, if it's two different funding mechanisms, which it's gotta be.
Right.
So there's some give and take there.
So if I may, it, it sounds like one scenario in which putting both of the developments under a single TIF, and one scenario in which it could work as if developers were already gonna be working together, and they came in here, and were showing us that they can work in tandem. Otherwise, it would be better, if they're not going to be heavily working together, that it would be better to separate them. In your opinion, is that right?
Yeah, theoretically, I mean, is, do we know that Cary Hills, have they already asked for a TIF to be uh, uh, utilized? They say you have two requests out there, so at this point, um.
They haven't, they haven't submitted their application for their plan yet, or flintin' development yet.
Right.
Okay, Aaron, then Donna?
She, she was first.
Oh, I thought you wanted to make a comment a minute ago. Okay, Donna?
Well, it's my understanding that negative borrowers are gonna develop further west, where's that TIF gonna come in then?
That's Hermosa Hills.
Hermosa Hills?
Yeah.
Is that existing already then?
I mean, I wasn't.
Huh?
That would be TIF number three, four.
So Cary Hills is coming in before that one then?
Probably, yeah, that's how it looks. Looks like it's Preston's ready to go, then they're coming right behind Cary, with Cary Hills, 'cause they're redoing the plat, well, they already redid it. And then the third one, I haven't seen anything yet from Hermosa Hills, but they said they, they got design and stuff, so.
So, um, did you have another comment, Aaron?
Yeah, um, I think we kind of, just another point, they're, they're on different paces, they're gonna be developing at different paces. That seems to feel like another indication that separate TIFs would be more secure in the long run.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay.
I don't know about secure, but it would be easier in the end.
Andy, you heard, Minister?
That's one of my comments.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, to have that many developers involved in one giant TIF, that's like trying to, that's too much.
It would be easier administratively, you know, to separate it. And as far as the, the fourth TIF, that is not within town boundaries then.
They have to annex. They've agreed to annex to receive sewer.
That's Hermosa Hills.
And that might become an issue all on its own, which may make it take way longer. Which is, you know, whatever, but, yeah, it is what it is, exactly, but um, it, we don't want it to complicate TIF number two or TIF number three. We wanna get those going first.
Yeah, and then Cary Hills is straight water, sewer, city, no problem. Uh, Preston's up there to the north, um, we're gonna have to put in the water, and hook up to the master meter in Southern Black Hills, and then Linda's gonna have to deliver the check to Southern Black Hills for their water.
All right.
Hopefully, they accept the check.
Enough of that, Anthony. So Terry, we're talking about all this TIF and TIF administration, are you gonna be, are you gonna have the bandwidth in order to do this, or are we gonna have to add another position in order to, to help administer this, from the town's perspective?
At this point, I don't see that we have to add it, but, I mean, who knows?
Right, I mean, so, but, but if we do need to, then that can be paid for by the TIF as well? And, and is that a caveat that we put into the structure of the TIF?
We could do that, or, or what you do is you could just adopt administrative fee, or, you know, just adopt administrative fee to help cover some of the costs. That's what we did with Mitchell, we just said, it's like an application fee.
Okay.
That's what we did.
Um, I would like to invite, I know we're talking about Preston's and stuff, we do have Jim in the audience tonight. Jim, did you have any comment on this, or questions, or anything?
Well, thanks for this opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
There's so much information being thrown around out here, it's hard for me, in this meeting, to gather up what that's gonna mean to us. You know, financially, it's always a concern, that, you know, all of a sudden, well, we need to do this, so we need a bunch of money right here, right now, and so, that's why my discussions, I guess, with Anthony is always included, well, what's this gonna cost us to even get off the ground? So, I'm a little hesitant about seeing new things thrown in here, until we really have an opportunity to absorb that, and make a good, firm, accurate decision. And I think those guys have been working on it, and, and I'm very happy to hear what I heard today, so.
Okay, very good.
That's a good enough answer.
Whatever you'd like it to be, sir. All right, Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add, or? I see you looking back there, I don't know if you're.
Well, I'm just curious.
Yes, sir.
So you get the TIF, and the developer, as soon as the TIF's in, am I understanding it correct, that generally the property tax value goes up, and then the developer pays more in, in property taxes?
Not because of the placement of a boundary around the area, not at all. Uh, but what makes that value go, go up is the naturally occurring increase in value, because instead of a hayfield, it's now six home sets. And you're, you're, you're making, instead of a hundred dollars on that acre of hayfield, you're making probably about six or at least three or four thousand per home, for, for very, for, for for housing, frankly, um, on that same acre. So that's where the increase in value comes, but with the, just merely by the placement of a boundary around a certain area, does not make the taxes go up at all.
Okay, so, not that, God forbid it ever happened, the town wouldn't be affected if, say, the developer went bankrupt?
No, that's another thing to keep in mind, is that the improvements identified in the project plan are all financed by TIF funds, um, which presumably, under the agreement or whatever, are gonna be initially fronted by the developer. Now, let's say that the developer borrows money, this happened at Rushmore, Rushmore Crossing, Rapid City. Where two thousand eight hit, and it slowed the hell out of everything. Um, so they're sitting on a giant amount of, of, of debt, anticipating that they'd have such growth to cover it? Well, one of the things, one of the big problems was, it took longer, even though it was less than twenty years, because they didn't have enough built-in for, for interest, interest started eating the developers alive. So there's all these things, you have to considerably design these things to make them pretty much bulletproof. And one thing you can say, though, it's always bulletproof to the town, because it's statutorily protected that any TIF improvements must only, the payment must only come out of the TIF designated fund, never the general fund. It's, it's not even statutorily permitted.
Okay, one last little input there, you said interest rates, are these like, are they fixed, or are they on and on?
It depends on what kinda financing mechanism each, each developer obtains, yeah?
Okay.
Okay, Dan?
And I, too, correct me if I'm wrong, once that TIF is established, that tax rate is basically set in that area, and then any increases in values is what then accumulates to pay that TIF off, and that's what the developer uses, is an, eggs, elevated tax revenues of the values of that property or them houses, so if you got a hundred thousand dollar house in that area, it's frozen. So now, all of a sudden, this TIF goes, and now there are a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, that tax revenue goes up. Well, them monies in that district are all used to pay that TIF off, and go for the infrastructure money, the road money, and secure that for the administration money, everything else in that development.
Yeah, correct, and there's two types there, and it's very, it's very important to make sure you identify which this is. One is pretty much for private, for, for essentially residential use. And the other ones, um, are for economic impact, positive economic impact use, which, under the statute, only requires that one business will be created there within the next twenty years or so. It's always very, very minimal, right, so it takes a, takes a very, very unimaginative imagination to even, you know, okay, yeah, I think one will happen. Uh, so, the town must designate, however, that this is a, this is a economic impact TIF, not just a private TIF. And that way, it, when it goes to Department of Revenue for, for a general review, I've been through this the hard way, when it goes to economic, to the Department of Revenue for, for review, it's only, they're only reviewing whether or not the values were properly figured, the taxation values. They don't have a damn bit of say on what happens, or what the town says, or county says, that that TIF, whether it is or is not an economic impact TIF. They try, at least they used to.
Okay.
My second question, if I may.
Yeah.
Is our town engineer then doing all the engineering for this development, private development then?
Anthony, is that, is that?
Yeah, it's part of the plan on this one. We've got to the point of a plat, so we can assess the quantities, determine the cost for infrastructure, compare to the TIF. So, because we had to take it to that point, so we could assess it, it would be just the next step of completing the designs, versus handing them to someone else to do.
Okay.
I know the developer generally has to have their own engineer, of course, that's not involved with the town, to do their work, and that's why with Custer County Housing, we had that discussion, because they had, wanted to use our town engineer, but wouldn't because of the conflict and the situations it developed at that time, so they had to get their own engineer. So I didn't know if there was gonna be a compliance difference on that, and if he's able to be used here, then is that gonna be where the town's gonna allow him to use for Cary Hills, is he gonna be able to use for Hermosa Hills?
And then all that money's come back from the TIF, or is that going to be a conflict in that circumstance?
Right.
Kent?
To that point, um, is there a possibility of conflict? I suppose. But it would be pretty tough to try to not figure it out really quick if there's something unfortunate happened, or, hey, this doesn't smell right. Um, I, I, I think our concern for that is pretty low, especially given the, the excellent quality of people that are involved with Preston's and, and Benish. Um, but, that said, what standards do you wanna, should, should, should be, should be applied to that? And that is, if, if Benish does the engineering for, uh, Preston's development, that's, that's just fine. Um, and there is a, is a bifurcation of costs, arguably, that, where there's, there are certain things that are done specifically for the developer, that the developer's responsible for in finances on the front side, um, and this is just generally. And there are specific things that the engineer does for the town, that are the town's responsibility, normally. Um, it can go as much on either side as possible. If the town pays all the engineering bills upfront, including the infrastructure for Preston's, um, then that engineering cost would be taken from the TIF proceeds as they come in as well. It's a line item.
Right, but as far as, um, I mean, you know, 'cause if they design it, and then they're gonna be our engineer too, do, we don't need like a third party to check it out or anything? And nothing against you guys, but just legally speaking.
Well, in this, in this, in this unique case, they are the town engineer.
Right.
Okay? So, unless you got, you are looking at them with a contemptuous eye, I would say you probably trust them that we have to have a, a third party to look over our engineer.
Right.
Uh, normally, like in Rapid City or other areas, uh, what the, our, what my engineer would submit would be reviewed by the, the city planning and engineering department, make sure it complies with all, all their stat, you know, all their, our criteria. This case, we know the criteria are gonna be met, because it's our town engineer that's doing it.
Okay.
So I think it's an advantage to both parties.
Okay, very welcome. All right, Linda?
Well, not to mention the fact that if Benish screws up, they're out of our job, you know? And, and our job is potentially, you know, the rest of the town's life, and the rest of Benish's life, where, um, the Preston's will run out of land eventually, and, and there won't be a job for them. You know what I'm saying? Pretty simply, but sorry, I, I try to simplify everything, so.
I'll just give you a pre, uh, context in terms of, I've been doing this for a decade in municipal, as the city engineer for, I counted it now, and it was actually fifteen towns, not seven. So it was seven when I started job, the job in 2015, and it was fifteen when I ended it. And, um, all of them were multiple, put a couple zeros behind the population of the town versus Hermosa. And the only time that I had to recuse myself for any potential conflict of interest was when it was a plat review. Because plat review is prepared by the developer, and then reviewed by the town. But as soon as it passed that, and it was infrastructure for the town, I'm the engineer of the town, and I'm gonna design it to our community standard details, because I developed community standard details. And they don't have to match Rapid City or any other city, I can do, I can tailor those details to each town's needs. Um, so, that's been, that's been, uh, uh, the standard of our professional service for, forever. We have something called the PQMP system within Benish. So another division of our company reviews all my work, to make sure that it meets all the standards. Everything goes to the state ultimately, 'cause you're over twenty-five connections. And so, the state ends up doing the review with their engineering, um, before it becomes a part of the town's system. Uh, that doesn't mean that they hold, they're liable, we're still liable. Uh, but, I think there's some confusion on when an engineer from a town can do something and when they can't. Just sort of kinda making it up as you go, but there's other people, I mean, this, this, everybody does this through all fifty states, through every single town in the, in the country. And, like I said, the only time that we've ever had a situation where we have to recuse ourselves is when it's a plat, because it's a developer trying to do a land usage, and so he's trying to, let's say, propose a rezoning, or something that requires the town's review and approval. Right, now, this is a situation where they've already gone through this whole, this whole, I guess, process of allowing them to wanna develop that area, to the point where there was water and sewer lines led up to the, to the property boundary, and the town was annexed, and, or the property was annexed into the town. So it's kinda already gone through that vetting period, and the town's already decided years ago that they want this to develop.
Okay, Aaron?
I, I like how Anthony speaks to the point, and like, very clearly tells us, like, that's, that's really, every time you speak, it's, it's fantastic. Um, as far as conflict, I think really it's just transparency is simple enough, the ultimate cure for any possible conflict, and you guys are very transparent with us on your, on your building and everything you do, and I don't think that would be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, boy, Anthony.
Yeah, and also to his point as well, um, they have their internal QC procedures, and then also everything goes to state review, so it's, all the work is being looked at a minimum of three times, with them doing it, the QC and then the state review. So, uh, Ken, did you have a, a comment or question?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, is there, is there anybody else that'd like to comment? Oh, Shannon?
Sorry. It's, it's not about that engineering, but in regards to this agreement, how, I don't, I'm not sure how to word this, Ken, but how far back, like, from the, the point that, what was number one? You have your public hearing, adopt the boundaries, project plan. At what point, or how far back can you submit payments for, like, to get going? TIF?
Oh, organizational costs?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, yeah.
Because this would be some of that, and what we're talking about is a motion to approve the agreement.
Organizational costs are, um, are permitted to be reimbursed, and certain other, uh, things that are directly related to, let's, let's say, putting in a, you're putting in a, you know, mine of water mine, but you've already started excavation and incurred some costs and things like that, that can also be covered as part of that cost under the TIF, whether it's...
Is that the developer's agreement, or does, does the state have a statute that tells how far back you can go?
It would, it would, uh, it has to be germane to the project itself, just because somebody in nineteen ninety-eight started something, they're not entitled to reimbursement.
But if we approve this tonight or next week, and then it's, say, July or whatever, by the time we get to the point of adopting the boundaries, then however far we get, can we go back and include, say, this meeting that we have regarding or adopting this agreement, or anything that he's prepping to get us to that point of those stages? Because that's basically what we're doing, right? The agreement to set the stages to create TIF number two. So I guess I wanna make sure that we're covered on getting reimbursed for the costs that we're already spending. And when, second part, before I forget, the administration stuff, you know, with the separate TIFs and the umbrellas of the developers, you'll have their pay apps, interest monthly, you know, from the funds going in, and then you're, you're accounting for that. I think the big administrative part is gonna be Jill, because as they develop, it's gonna be all those building permits coming in, and all the different permits that come with a building permit package, and, um, and so that kinda goes into what we talked about last time with the added engineering contract, and so should that be considered part of this and fall under the TIF, and not just?
So, uh, that's, uh, interesting, so maybe the second time I would recuse myself would be if, let's say, a builder came in and hired me to do the structural design of their house, and I'm the building official, I would have to recuse myself from that, from that situation too, but that, that like rarely happens, and I don't think I'm offering those services.
I think a lot of those adding fees will be in Jill's permits or P and Z board, uh, if we go that route again, or Anthony's stuff there, if that should be classified and included in.
So, I think what you're asking is the, I don't know if they will be, because that's not public infrastructure, right? 'Cause you're asking if, um, like, the administration of the building permits for the things being built in the TIF district will be reimbursed? So what's your, some more?
Well, her hours of administering those permits that are part of the development of the TIF.
But it's not the...
Is that administrative?
I, I don't think you would extend that far in, uh, you know, 'cause that's something that we would, the town would be doing in a normal course, whether there was a TIF district there or not. Um, or whether, you know, so...
Well, we wouldn't have that development without the TIF.
That, that's, exactly right, exactly right, so there are certain things that we perform as a town that, um, are paid by their fees, I mean, the fees that you charge a developer, anyhow.
Right.
Um, so, uh, and, but anything to do with disperse, dispersal of the funds, and, you, you know, 'cause every time the pay, uh, request comes in, it has to be signed off by the engineer too, verifying that these, that that water line's actually in the ground, and those kinda things, and that it actually occurred within the town boundaries.
Right.
Uh, or, within the TIF boundaries, excuse me. So, um, you, you review those very carefully, make sure all the receipts are in order, 'cause it's a pain in the ass to go back and have to redo any of that.
And that's why I'm asking, 'cause we had to go back and do, redo so many things, or redo a meeting, or redo, because we had to do this.
That's a legitimate cost of it, in the administration of the TIF improvements.
That first one, we had only added like maybe two hours a month, I think. Which, at, at that point, there was really nothing going on, it was just a, one entry of interest, monthly, quarterly.
And, and oftentimes, eh, you'd see on a line item, you couldn't just do, you couldn't, your line item entry can't just be, um, uh, two days per month, or two, whatever.
Two hours.
Yeah, it, it can't just be that, it has to, okay, so that equates to a guesstimate on the high side, remember, you wanna make sure you're not selling yourself short. That equates to, there's gonna be two hundred dollars a month of having to, uh, administer. And some, some months might be zero, some months might be a thousand. And so figure out what that number's comfortable at, and you plug it in over the lifespan of the deal, and, oh, I guess that's, uh, you know, twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars on that line item.
Right, I just wanna sell us short. Like we could've last time, I don't wanna sell us short.
Yeah.
And make sure that if we're approving this agreement, that it's going to be covered in TIF funds and not out of the town's pocket.
I think that's kind of after, if we pass the agreement, those are things that we need to talk to Benish about that we include in the TIF. Right now, we're kind of just discussing whether or not we want Benish to prepare the TIF for us.
Alright.
So, um, is everybody okay with the discussion?
Yeah.
One final thing I'll say, asked to contact yourself, um, it's, it's much like, if not exactly like, the other three ones from last meeting that I was asked to approve, I approved them, uh, and, and that just for, also around the record, um, the only thing to change on each one of these is that jurisdiction stays in South Dakota, not Illinois.
Thank you, thanks, Kent. All right, um, I guess that's the end of the discussion then? So, um, are we good?
Dan, I have one more?
You got one more, Dan?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everybody for this information, that this has probably been the most informative TIF ever brought out to the public, to actually bring good information up, and I wanna thank all of you for your research, for your input, for your output. And I don't want anybody to think that I was against the engineer, I'm, I'd rather have the town engineer, because he is gonna protect us. He's gonna protect every element of what goes on in every TIF and have a better strategy in it. So I didn't want down the road, somebody jumping out there and saying, "Wait." I thought it's a good thing, all the way through, so I thank everybody for their input tonight.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Okay, all those in favor of adopting the agreement for Benish to prepare the TIF two, please, uh, vote now.
Aye.
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 Well, I could clear, although I,
Okay.
I'm still unclear on something, but it's a good start.
Okay, very good. So, motion carries, so, thank you very much, thank you guys. Um, so let's move on. Uh, actually, you guys wanna take a five-minute break and just kinda stretch our legs, it's kind of a long discussion? Let's do, uh, let's reconvene at, uh, eight-thirty. Oh, sorry, okay. Seven-thirty-one, thanks, Tammy.
Go get happier, or what?
Alrighty, y'all, ready to get back to it?
Sure.
Yeah, let's get it over with.
Yeah. Kristi Noem's coming in?
Uh, what?
No, that's...
I know, that's what Kent said.
It's gonna be on the news or on some show or something.
So, we're reconvening at seven-thirty-two? So anyways, thanks, guys, we'll be, see you later. Okay, so back on to, uh, the agenda. Just finished the TIF two. Now we're on to designation of person slash organization for...
I thought we had vendor permit applications.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, sorry. Vendor permit applications.
Oh, I'm the first guy.
Yes.
He changed.
Yep.
I really like the new one.
Yep.
And I like them separated. Do you just need a motion to approve?
I believe so, Jill?
We do need to maybe go over the fees.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, I see the question marks on, on the mobile food.
The first one, the transient vendor and peddler's application. We used to have on there plus five percent for the monthly, and I'd like to take that off of there.
That's a damn thing, it's gotta go.
Was it, was that a different thing?
All right, all right.
I was trying to squeeze it out.
Yeah.
I feel it's still awesome. It's just confused, it's confusing to find out what...
What that is?
Yes.
So you wanna strike the five percent all together?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So are we happy with the one-day fee of fifty? Seven days, two hundred monthly, eight hundred?
She said she's on a transient.
Well, transient vendor, how little could that go? Truck, trailer, scan, tent, move. I mean, if my grandma's, I don't have a grandma anymore, but she was selling Christmas crafts at a three-day fair, she would have to pay a hundred and fifty to be there?
Um, if it's gonna be like a special event, then, um, I have on the mobile, well, I was gonna have, um, mobile food and beverage one fees, and if it's a special event, the fees would be cheaper, for a special event.
I'd like to see it added to the bill.
Cool, okay.
In my opinion, that's just my opinion.
So it's twenty-five dollars for a special event?
Yeah, because when they do have a lot of vendors come in, you know, some are just selling jewelry, or mine, we're selling coupleware when you earn it.
Mm-hmm.
Those, so, I make enough to pay that.
All right, Aaron?
Give away all your profit.
Uh, I've had, actually, quite a lot of discussions with the business owners in town about the, um, about the vendor fee, and, um, my personal belief, my personal opinion, I don't think that if somebody, a vendor is setting up on a commercial property or privately owned property, um, I don't think they should be paying a vendor fee, um, especially because if it's the Hermosa Community Center, they're charging their fees, so now, and they're, these people are making stuff in their houses generally, they're crafts, they're not making a lot of money. To be hit with two fees, it usually just turns them away, um. I get the, the logic behind not having people just kinda show up and sell stuff out of their trunk in a parking lot, um, and that's, that's fine. If they're gonna do that, we need to, you know, have some accountability there, but if we're going to be working on... But if we're going to be working on community development with these fairs and everything that they're throwing that are a booming success. We need to make it as easy as possible. And I just, I don't think that if somebody sets up in the community center or on community center property. Or in Pop's parking lot, or maybe they set up a farmer's market in his lawn. I don't think those people should be paying any vendor fee at all. If they have permission from a commercial property owner who is generating revenue in the town, contributing to the sales tax of the town, the alcohol tax of the town. I don't think that they should have additional fees on top of it. I think it hurts the town as a community. I think it hurts the, the, the growth of that community atmosphere that we're going for.
Um, that's an interesting point. Um, I mean, just as a general, just as a general, um, statement though. The reason for the fees is to provide some barrier of entry so that we don't get somebody just rolling up and selling whatever out of their trunk then, right?
Right. And I think that it's, the way I would, if I could picture the perfect agreement, it would be unless they have an agreement with the property owner where they are vending from. If they have an agreement with a community center existing and they're paying the community center a fee, fine. They've got to be legitimate to some level. You know, if they're setting up in Pop's parking lot with that food truck, that fantastic smoked food truck that shows up every once in a while, right? If they're, they're with permission from somebody who owns the property, they, we've got to rely on that property owner to vet them. And I think that that would be beneficial for the.
One of the reasons I did the separate, um, the special event application. Because they're thinking about doing a summer nights here. Um, and they wanted all the vendor fees to go through the town. They didn't want to have to deal with it at all. So there's got to be some type of administrative fee that we kind of need to charge to keep track. Um, these vendors are supposed to, um, show liability insurance. They're supposed to, someone needs to keep track of all that. So that's kind of where I was going with the separate vendor.
Okay, let's have Donna and then Shanna and then Tammy has a question or comment too.
Um, well, the only thing is if you don't have a vendor fee, how are you going to keep? How are you going to keep track? I mean, you know, they have to pay sales tax is the thing. If they don't have their name, don't have a vendor. Registration of some kind. Um, I, 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 I know there's a lot of people, they, during the summertime, they, they depend on that little bit for an extra income. But how are we going to control it? Is a real good question.
Um, could we have it to where if they, alright, their fee gets waived if they come to us with an on paper agreement that they have permission to be, um, at the, they have permission from the community center to be there. So we can waive the fee.
I have a couple ideas on that.
Yep, you're up.
Okay. So I think like the summer nights, if they're on public property, public street, public right-of-way. That would come to the town and that would save them from having to deal with those vendors.
Okay.
And how we place that with our code enforcement or whatnot to make sure. And then we're covered liable, liability wise with their license numbers. But perhaps we could look at some kind of umbrella annual vendor agreement with the event centers. That has some kind of waiver of liability that they are the ones responsible for getting this information from the people that they have at their events and putting the responsibility back on them through this annual agreement. And just include who, you know, whoever wants to be included, give them an application time annually. So if Pop's wants to be included as an umbrella, the community center wants to be an umbrella.
What are you going to do about sales tax?
That's up to the person selling.
I know, but are they going to realize they have to pay sales tax?
Well, that's what the umbrella agreement would be for. So if it's, we have an annual agreement with the community center. That means the community center that's bringing in that vendor is the one responsible for telling them, we need a copy of your license number and you need to make sure that you are charging the city sales tax as well as the South Dakota sales. So we're putting the responsibility on the umbrella so that we're not double requiring a double fee, double charging them to make them come through here. So if they want to streamline it basically, then they take on the responsibility that they're going to make sure that they're legit.
That's an interesting idea. Uh, Tammy and then Laura.
Okay, I used to be one of the people who sold my things at vendor places. I've done it for cities. I've done it for private places. I've done it for a lot. A city usually will come out, if you're on a city property, whoever's in charge of it will send out an email or whatever the, the signup sheet and you will pay a fee and to the city, like to that one. Whoever's putting it off. Right. Uh, if it's on private property, it is up to that owner of the private property to, if they want to collect money or not from that vendor. It has nothing to do with the city. It has nothing to do with anyone because it's private property. Um, the other thing is, is being the seller, I don't have to show you any forms of me paying my sales tax on anything that I sold. As being an independent seller, I have a ten ninety-nine every year to fill out. That's on me to deal with my own taxes, my own. How much money I brought in, how much money went out, stuff like that. That's all on me to do. That's not for Joe Schmo saying, you need to prove to me that you're paying taxes on your stuff to be able to sell in my function.
Right. We just want a copy of their license number to show that they're.
But not every seller, every person needs a license though. Like I did resin and I didn't need to have a license to sell. I did artwork and I didn't need to have a license to sell. If I did food and drinks and stuff like that, I had to have a license because that's the health board. But to do crocheting or resin or art or wood stuff, you don't need to have a license for. You just need to fill out a form saying I paid my fee. This is, I'm setting up a six-by-six square. I'm here from two to four and that's it.
So then did you pay sales tax?
I paid sales tax, but that's on my own end.
Right.
That's for me to fill out a ten ninety-nine every year.
Okay.
Uh, Laura?
Just, if someone doesn't know that they have sales tax to pay, then the sales tax that the town misses out on is just about pennies. So if someone is such a small business that they're not aware of their own personal responsibility to have gotten a sales tax license. You're literally missing out on ten dollars in sales tax from this person. If they do the full five hundred dollar benchmark that's required in a year to have to pay sales tax. So if you have people who have these small businesses and all they want to do is participate in the community life of Hermosa. They're not, they might not have a sales tax license. They might sell, maybe they've taken, um, you know, home preserving through, you know, the extension office or whatever. They have jellies to sell. They sell a hundred dollars worth of jelly. They're perfectly happy to come to this event and participate in the community, but they're not going to give you two dollars in sales tax. Like the town isn't going to care about that. They don't owe it to anybody. They don't have to have a sales tax license for under five hundred dollars of, of sales. Anyone above that absolutely knows. So just throwing that out there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Linda, did you have any, anything like that? Okay, so, um, Jill, you're looking for us to approve these new applications, right?
I'm thinking maybe they just need to be discussed in a future work session.
Yeah.
Um, I was trying to get it through quickly because, um, Breezy mentioned she was going to be sending vendors our way.
Okay.
Um, about March and, um, Breezy, I don't know if Dan has anything to say about this. She wanted that to all go through the town. She didn't want to have to. So if you guys are going to do the special event and we're not doing any vendor fees, then we can do that also.
And I think that's the big thing, I think on that, Nora. Is my feelings were the same as what you expressed, exactly, that end on as far as that goes. That we protect them vendors and Shanna, that we don't overcharge them, that we don't run them out of town. That we do encourage them to come in because it's going to be the pizza, the lazy R, the truck stop, the pops, the, every business in town that's going to take an advantage to it. So in our feelings, if there's going to be stuff on the public right-of-way, yeah. Then I think they need to come up. Are we worried if they have insurance or if they have a license or not? That's the private landowners responsible.
Well, so, yeah, I mean, township, there's nothing with those vendor fees.
And what we talked about with the special event over here with Breezy is possibly, let's say, we wanted to use that alley right there and shut that alley down. Wouldn't that be an acceptable situation where they could park in that alley and then use our lot? Use the Trails West lot, do all the vendors and not have a throwaway there or a throwaway coming off of forty. They'd still have second and going around to first that it still have, you know, all that manning, wireless.
Alright, so.
I think that's more closing down the alley by board approval for the event and not, not affecting the vendors. They would still be considered part of the event under the private property, I would think. And that fee used to only be ten dollars. It was just a way to make sure we covered our assets basically on private property. Or on public property to make sure that they were legit and not, you know, selling bad states on their way through town.
Donna?
Well, I think if they're on private property, the town shouldn't have to worry about it. I mean, you know, we, cause we can't justify telling somebody that owns the property who they can have come on their property. And I mean, not.
We wouldn't be saying who.
Do we know what ordinance this is required under so we can look at, trying to change that?
The ordinance is very vague.
Yeah, Linda, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just, for the sake of discussion, going to be the devil's advocate here and say, um. So we have an event that has whatever, seven food trucks come in and they're on basically private property. But how fair is that to our restaurants that pay constantly?
They should have to pay.
Pay constantly for their, their own land, their own property, their electricity, their water, their utilities. Um, so how fair is that? Uh, some of these food trucks make huge amount of money, huge amount of money. And I'm not talking about the little bitty vendors. I'm talking about the, you know, food trucks are a hundred thousand dollars to buy. I mean, these people are in business to make money, to be a business. Um, so.
Aren't they already paying the private property owner to be there in the parking lot with the other seven food trucks?
And, and still, how fair is that? Because.
Then they're.
Yeah, I know, but it's.
Uh, so.
The town should get a chunk of that.
But that's me.
This, this, we can, I think this topic probably deserves its own work session because there's a lot of stuff that needs to be hashed out. A lot of great points being made and things that we should be, uh, considerate of. Um, but as far as Jill's concerned, you needed some output for this by March. Is that, is that correct? Or did you need something done tonight?
I was trying to, I was under the understanding that Breezy wanted the town to take care of all the vendor permits and having them show that they had liability insurance, that she wanted the town to do that.
I believe that that's if the town is asking for them to have a.
Fee.
Fee.
Fee, correct.
As a six-by-six square vendor, I don't, I wouldn't carry liability insurance. Now, a food truck who serves food and stuff will cover. And on the fees for a food truck, I've gone through vendors through California, Utah, Texas, everywhere I've sold. And every food truck type thing that you know they're going to make a thousand dollars or more, their fees are triple, sometimes quadruple what our little vendor fee is. If ours is twenty-five bucks, their fee's like two hundred dollars. So it still pays to have them there, but they have to pay more because they're obviously going to sell more than what.
Yeah.
A woodworker's going to sell.
Yeah, so, um, let's hear Deb's comment and then I want to ask Jill a quick question.
Okay, just a short comment. With Breezy, she has reached out to Lince's, Rockin' R or Lazy R or whatever. She, she wants to bring the, the.
Community.
Community in. And if, I mean, Lince's had went down at the fair and brought pizzas and stuff. That's what she's trying to do. It's not bringing just a bunch of outsiders. She's trying to incorporate what we have here.
Community.
Yes, absolutely. That's just all.
And the double feed and stuff like that. I wouldn't be, I've been to one where they wanted a twenty-five dollar vendor application. And then you get there and you start being like, oh, by the way, it's an extra fifty dollars because we're renting the area. No, I pull out, like peace out.
Yeah.
So you, you can't double charge someone. You have to have your fees in order of what's, what you're going to be giving.
Right, so, um. So did, did.
Final comment?
Right, I just want to ask Jill, so as far as like the, so basically the purpose of this part of the meeting was to look at implementing the special event application for, uh, Breezy's situation. And then also you wanted us to look at doing the mobile food and, and beverage vendor license application and the transient vendor peddler's application. And so we could just kind of take care of it all at once, right? That was your intent here?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, Shanna?
Well, I agree. I think it's going to take another meeting to kind of review this and split things up. Um, but like when you mentioned the food trucks pay more, that's, is it not to the organization? Like they pay extra for that? The electric site, you know, and all that. So it's going to the organization and not to the town. So that's definitely something that we need to work out too. So I.
Okay, um, so.
Lot of discussion on how to split that up.
If we, I mean, if we push this to a work session, um, may, maybe next Thursday, something like that. Would that be okay as far as what you need us to do, Jill?
Actually, I guess it's no hurry if Breezy doesn't want us to, doesn't want us, want to go through us. That's all I was trying to do.
Uh, yeah, I haven't had a chance to sit down and talk with her. So let me have a chance to, you know, I'm going to paint her in right here. I was sort of really putting this together. I'm just kind of a sidekick.
Yeah, cause she said, I'm going to start sending vendors away in March and I thought, well.
She just didn't really know what the town was expecting from her.
Okay.
Basically, so.
Sounds exciting, yeah.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of doing it. I like the idea of providing a hub for organization for doing it through the town. Um, as long as we have our own liabilities covered and everything like that. Um, but obviously I don't think that we can make a intelligent decision on this tonight. And so, um, with all yours permission, I'd just like to move on to the next agenda item. If you all are okay.
Just have one comment.
Okay, Donna, your last comment?
I know when like the trucks park at Harbor Freight or Runnings, they do pay the store a fee for parking there.
Okay.
So I, I think, you know, more like on the food trucks more than on somebody that's going to be selling pot holders.
So as far.
Well, that gives the business the incentive of bringing them in and the town unfortunately loses out, but.
Yeah, alright. So as far as this goes, um, I really think this is, should take its own work session. So as far as scheduling goes, how are you all feeling about, and, and next Thursday? Or do you have a, a preference for a different day?
I can't do next Thursday, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't know, Tuesday's just worked good. I mean, we're already planning on Tuesday.
So the eighteenth then?
No, that's board meeting. Eleventh or the twenty-fifth.
Saturday morning.
No.
Saturday? Come on. Just making sure everyone's still awake.
Don't, don't we have a board meeting next week?
Yeah, we have on the fourth and then the eighteenth. So let's go in between the eleventh.
Okay.
Is that served already for Tuesday night? Is that served already for Tuesday night?
My calendar's. I see, yep. So we have a meeting on the fourth, so would the, if we did the work session on the eleventh, would that be okay for you?
Sure.
And you guys would have enough time to get with Breezy and kinda hash all that out?
Yeah.
Alright, cool. Alright, so let's.
Just one more. She's not actually a citizen of her foremost, but should we invite her into?
She can come to meetings.
Come to the meeting.
She can come to meetings, yeah. Yeah, and, and actually.
She's done a lot, I think.
Absolutely, and I didn't do it earlier, but in that vein, I'd like to point out that we updated the, it used to be items from, uh.
Public, public comment.
Yeah, public comment. I changed it to items from constituents. And so, um, using the authority of the chair just to, so we can limit it to, in this time, we can limit it to people that are basically gonna be voting for us. However, if there is an agenda item that's going to affect somebody outside the town, obviously, they would, they would be able to comment during that time, so. I'm interested to hear any comments on that offline, not right now, but just for the purposes of time. So I just wanted to point that out based on Erin's comment, so. So everyone okay with the eleventh? Shannon?
Just a quick question to get everyone's thoughts and ideas. Can you post a form? Is anyone interested in just coming up here reviewing and talking informally? Not in a special meeting or a work session timed? Know what I mean? Just sit down and go through the books and talk about them and really brainstorm. Cause it seems like once we get going, we have to move on because we've already spent meeting time on it. Is that something we need?
I'd be willing to meet you up here and.
It's Saturday morning though.
Yeah, right.
No Saturday morning?
No Saturdays. But I, I would be willing, call me and we can set up a time and we can discuss it and.
Well, I'm saying post a form.
A form, possible.
Yeah, well.
Get together.
I mean, that sounds like a good pre-work session discussion to kinda get everything going. But it would have to be less than three board members at a time, right?
Unless you post a form. Informal.
Okay.
Ordinance reviews and discussion or something like that?
I think I'd be interested in the output of that meeting, but I don't know if I'd have time to go to it, but, and, you know, no, no slight against anybody, but I've got a lot of stuff going on, so.
Sometimes it's just easier to kinda throw and brainstorm.
Yep.
Okay, well, so is everybody good with the work session? February eleventh at six P M to go over this vendor situation?
Can I go like four or five and so we can get on with the time for something?
Well, I think four will be, um, early for me. I know with basketball season, um, six will work better, but.
Sorry, basketball.
I know. What did I say, funny?
No, I just, no, it's sports.
It's three o'clock then?
Yeah, I can't, I can't do that either. I have to work, so. Alright, I mean, anyone wanna split the difference with Donna and do five thirty?
Six o'clock. Oh, come on. Five fifteen then.
Five forty-five?
I don't give a.
Alright, I guess six, six it is then, alright.
What day? February eleventh?
February eleventh at six, yes ma'am.
Tuesday.
To go over this and I, that'll give, that's just a work session and the following meeting will implement what we discussed out of the work session, which will be on.
Hopefully.
Which will be on the eighteenth, right?
Okay, I'll get changed and prepared by then.
So that'll, that'll give us enough time to do everything, Jill?
Sure.
Okay, awesome. Alrighty, folks, well, um, so let's move on from there.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Jill. Uh, to designation of person slash organization for flag duty, so, um.
Well, this was something that was brought to my attention. So like when President Carter died, the flags were supposed to be flown at half past for like thirty days and I didn't know. I mean, I don't get notification for anybody and I decide, with everything else I have going, is there any organization that could do that? I mean.
What about Boy Scouts?
There's some, you know.
Do we have a chapter of the Boy Scouts in the town yet? How about talking to the Legion? Bob King usually handles.
And Bob King is the one I call when I want to like fix the flag or put a new one up. He's been really good about. But I just wanna, I could ask him.
Cause I'm sure he knows, he knows all the regulation with flags and blade poles.
And those poles are a little tricky because there's like two little things on the side you gotta push in and put, and then you turn them. And then the inside is like a plastic piece that gets broke if you don't get it hooked right, so. I'm a little nervous about messing with them to begin with, so.
Erin, then Dan.
Just, just a thought, would it be an interesting idea for everybody to see if the school would want to be involved and have a group of students?
Or a four H club?
Participate?
That's an interesting idea.
Government class? Maybe.
Is that, but is that something we could rely on when we needed it to be done like in this case?
But like, it's like they, it's in June and all school.
Does the Legion still have that women's auxiliary?
Alright, Dan?
I would suggest Bob King again, and since he's already doing the old Legion sign over here. I think I'd just throw twenty bucks a month or something out there if he'd watch it just for fuel back and forth or some simple little fee like that. Bob is so conscious about it. I think he'd be a great asset if you'd offer that to him and say, would you like you to have this position as a town? And I think it'd really make him feel good too, for all he's done.
And then several people mentioned his name.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, we still need to ask.
So I can, I can ask him.
If you would wanna do it.
I'll call him tomorrow and see if he's even interested in.
Right.
And then, then we could talk about it maybe at the next meeting if he says, okay.
Okay.
That's all I needed.
Alright, thanks Terry. So, um, she's going to take care of that. So we're on to, uh, item, whatever letter that is now. The review resolution zero three dash twenty twenty-five sewer rate structure.
Is this gonna be read at the next meeting then?
However you wanna do it, um. So this is for the ten percent that we talked about that we need to implement along with that twelve dollars and eighty cents that we did on the sewer. So I went back, the last sewer rate structure was done in twenty twenty-one, so I updated all those gallons up at the top. My only question was down below where it says each thousand gallons after the twenty thousand. I couldn't really find out how the difference was done in those, because if you look at the old one, like it went from, for the residential went from one twenty-five to one fifty, I mean, and then it went from two fifty to three fifty and then three seventy-five to five seventy-five. So I don't know if you just, how, where those numbers came from. I didn't, I didn't put like a ten percent increase on those, so that's. Wasn't sure.
So each one should go up by three dollars and fifty cents after the first initial five dollars, right? Each increment should be on residential. And six fifty for the commercial out of town, but we don't have commercial in town listed in the verbiage. Or the out of town residential. Are those different?
Yeah, you have, you have a dollar fifty for in-town residential, three fifty for in-town commercial, five seventy-five for out of town residence, and six fifty for out of town commercial, so we have the four.
I was thinking that was your initial ten percent, the dollar.
No, I didn't change any of those numbers below. I only changed the ones above.
Well, I think they need to be changed too.
Yeah, and I don't know how you came up with those numbers in the past. I couldn't find anything that.
And six fifty out of town. So each time it goes up by a thousand dollars or.
A thousand gallons, yeah.
Yeah, it should increase.
Yep.
I mean, tall one by that amount, that's where those rates came from.
I don't remember how, how we figured that out either, but I, I think it was the old rates were.
I think we only adjusted the base rates there for a while and added D O T surcharges. I don't know if we ever really messed with the per thousand.
Well, you did change it from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-one. You did in pesos, yeah, so those did. Like, so in two thousand nine, the base for the first three thousand gallons was twenty-one dollars and it went to thirty-one dollars. So that's not quite a fifty percent increase and then.
Did the per thousand change?
But then the third, per thousand went from a dollar twenty-five to a dollar fifty.
So it only went up a little.
So it didn't go up quite that, so.
Quarter per thousand?
Yeah, so it's, I wasn't sure. You used a percentage or if you just.
I mean, that goes away too.
That would be twenty percent.
Have the people that are using more.
Yeah, and I don't, and I really don't think these bottom rates are gonna apply to a lot, because I don't know how many people use more than twenty thousand gallons of water or food.
Aside from agriculture, I don't see that happening, right?
Yeah, and they wouldn't be doing sewer at the same time with that. Okay, well, maybe we could handle it on a case by case basis and until it becomes a.
No.
A deal, no?
No.
Does it need to match the water? What is recharging the same for water versus sewer? Cause we assume whatever comes out of the faucet goes down the drain.
Cheaper as I recall.
Right, and this is the sewer.
Yeah, I mean, aside from the RV parks, there's nobody else dumping that much sewer.
So unless they have a watering meter, that's the only way you can take gallons off of your sewer rate because that's going land applying rather than going down the drain. Otherwise, they're assuming what's coming out of the faucet is going down the drain, so whatever your usage is on water is your usage on sewer.
Right.
But we used to charge more for a thousand gallons on the water.
So the water is more, it's, it's four dollars for the residential in town, four seventy-five for in-town commercial, nine dollars for out of town residential and nine dollars for out of town commercial.
So four, four seventy-five.
Four, four seventy-five, nine and nine.
Nine and nine. First, four dollars versus a dollar fifty, four seventy-five versus three fifty.
And then nine dollars.
Nine dollars versus five seventy-five and nine dollars.
So, so are we ready for this right now or do we need to look at it some more?
Well, I don't, you, I mean, we, this is one of those ones we wanted to get implemented as quickly as we can, so. Like I say, this, the top part's done. I just need to know what you wanna go with those. Yep.
In the two thousand and nine, what were the increases in the water before they were four dollars, four seventy-five, nine and nine? What did you increase on that?
Okay, so in two thousand nine.
Two thousand eight.
Right.
So that, and then prior to that was, I don't know, prior, after that, I guess I went to the two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-one, which is our current rate.
So in two thousand and nine was the dollar fifty?
It was a dollar twenty-five and then in two thousand twenty-one it went to a dollar fifty.
Okay, give me the dollar twenty-five one. Oh, that's on sewer though, not the water?
Right, so the water.
More than you should have, I'm kidding.
Well, that's what I gave you, but that's our current. So you want one before that?
Yeah, it might be two thousand six.
Probably in a different book. This only goes back to seventeen.
I don't remember, honestly. And I only asked because maybe the increase that we did there, we could equally increase that on the sewer side because we did it for the projects. What year do you think it was? Loans amount aren't the same.
Spring two thousand three or two thousand seven.
The, the model, uh, expects a ten percent increase in the sewer rate in order to, um, cover our, um.
So you would only increase these by ten percent? A dollar fifty to a dollar sixty-five?
No, I, that's what she already did on here, I believe.
On the top, I did. I didn't do anything with the bottom.
Not the extra.
That's what I'm asking for.
Oh, okay.
I don't see two thousand.
Well.
Two thousand nine.
I think that was just a base ten percent rate increase on the model. I don't know that it took into account these types of things.
Three seventy-five.
Yeah, that sounds right.
The water in two thousand nine was three seventy-five for residents in town and three seventy-five for in-town commercial. Seven dollars, seven dollars for out of town residential and seven dollars for out of town commercial.
Okay, and then those.
I doubt the model really considered users at those rates, right? So we probably just.
That agrees by twenty-five cents.
Like I say, it's not gonna.
Dollar.
Help this ride.
And then two dollars on the.
Yeah, I mean.
Out of towners.
This paragraph is only covering the above twenty thousand gallons?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so, um.
Do I just hear what needed to?
What do you think?
Twenty thousand gallons of sewer?
Well, it goes with their water, so if they use twenty, twenty thousand gallons of water, then they're dumping twenty thousand. Into the sewer.
Yeah, whatever comes out the faucet goes down the drain.
I mean, I could think maybe the school.
Oh, you, you would be surprised there. Do you, do you have our, um, schedule where we show how many people use a thousand gallons, how many use three thousand, how many use five, six? Don't have that. So work on that for, so that we can show everybody that when we, um.
Seems like they're a report, but a lot of them are your masters too.
I do.
I mean, he.
On those lists.
It's amazing, you know, it surprised me.
Really?
How many people were in the higher amounts.
So this one I did find, this was in twenty twenty-one. So it's gonna be a little more now, but, and that's when you were working on increasing the rates. Does that show?
It doesn't show how many, no. Oh, two, yes it does. Okay, two hundred and nine have, have, yeah, in town, have used the minimum. And twelve use.
Four, five, six thousand.
That's out of town, okay? Residential, commercial in town, there's eighteen, commercial out of town, there were two. But that does not break it down any further. I, somewhere in a, in a long process, we had to have that break down.
Okay.
And so somewhere it's in the records. I don't remember when, do you? Thank you for coming. Drive safe, hon.
Thanks.
Do you remember, Dan?
Um, which increases?
When, when, we had to do a, a rate chart showing how many people used the minimum, how many people used a thousand over the minimum, two thousand over the minimum, three thousand over the. Do you remember that?
We can run a, I think I can run a report in the G word.
Probably, now it's, computer will have that.
Or I could just, if you want to, I could just do that.
Yes.
And have it for the next.
That's, that's great, yep, I think that's very good.
So are we looking at increasing the per thousand?
I think we need to. How can you express and not that?
Yeah, okay, so this is something that we'll have to take on at the next meeting then.
That's fine.
She'll look at everything and then we'll.
I'll have some marketing pageant for you.
Yep.
Just keep rolling downhill.
I know, yeah. Sorry, but.
I think we need.
That's fine, I mean, you know, that's just how it goes, so. Alrighty, y'all, we're gonna move on. We're gonna, Terry's gonna do some more looking and, uh, Linda's gonna help her and then, uh, um, we'll talk about this at the next meeting.
Thank you, Terry, for giving me all those.
So next one up is discussion on purchasing the Vactor sewer cleaning truck from Hill City. And so we have a picture of the truck, I believe, in the packet.
And one's one price.
Last two pages.
Did they decide on that price, did they? It's not for free no more?
Right, so Chuck, do you have any comment on this or do you know where we're at with that right now? Anthony?
I don't know exactly, uh, Terry probably knows where. Anthony was gonna pull the money out, somebody tried to market.
Well, I had heard they wanted what they had into it, which I think was about twenty-five thousand. And I did talk to Anthony tonight and he said he was still trying to figure out where we could get that money from. The other thing is, he said that building over there where we were thinking about, um, storing it is not tall enough. So, so then, yeah, so then that leaves, are we going to rent that? I mean, we kinda gotta get back to that too. If we're gonna leave that, we have to advertise for.
It's taller than a blade?
Because of the, because of the thing it has on top, I can't remember.
The boom?
But the, yeah, the blue boom, so, he said it's, it's like eleven.
Yeah, the door's not tall enough.
He needs twelve four or something and it's eleven something, so. He needs twelve-four or something, and it's eleven something, so.
Yeah, so we could update that door and put it in there?
Wasn't it an actual top?
Alright, Erin?
Do you think this is an expense that could be covered under our new TIFs?
Um.
Need for equipment to maintain a larger infrastructure system?
I mean, it is public infrastructure equipment, so that's interesting.
For short version?
Yes. Is this, is, a little, maybe a little bit of a stretch to say, okay, it's related to the eventual maintenance of that infrastructure up there. So, but, equipment is a permitted expense under the TIF statutes.
Would you like a depreciative, like four, number four TIF, twenty-five percent?
It's, anything's possible, and I think if you're gonna do that, that might be part of that administration fee, that somebody that gets charged as an extra cost. Or, or sewer impact fee, anything like that, but I, I don't think as a line item for that particular TIF, because remember. Um, there's still, the money's still, the, the TIF still needs to produce the money to pay for that and everything else.
Yeah.
And if we're, if it's paying for that, they can't pay for other stuff, you know?
Right, yeah, that's a good point, uh, Linda?
Well, my point is that I don't think it has anything to do with whether we do a TIF or not do a TIF.
Right.
This, this is a money-saving thing, uh, to buy, we need to have it anyway, and so, I mean, it wa, it's always nice to, you know, find money. Like that to spend things, but, but it, it is not bearing in whether we buy it or not, I don't believe, so.
So, um, real quick, then we'll go Dan and Shannon, but, um, I think that, uh, basically what we need to do is figure out what they wanna sell it for. Have them set, send us a piece of paper with that number on it, okay, so we can't just, oh, you know, it's not a hearsay thing like it is right now. And then, once we get that number, we can decide from where we're gonna pay for it, and then, that's it, right? So, Dan?
I think, as Chuck had mentioned, you know, gosh, when we have these other guys come in, it's thirty grand.
Right, yeah.
And generate, so, it's a no-brainer to get the equipment, I, that was my second comment, you hit it right on the nailhead. We need that number, at one point, they were gonna give it to you. The second point, now it's up to twenty-four grand that they want for it, and then, how much is it gonna cost to fix it? You know, I know there was numbers thrown out, it could be five grand, it could be ten grand, or, you know, a guy wants to know that too.
So we gotta earmark some funds for that too, yep, Shannon, then Chuck?
Um, one part was on the funds, because, yeah, it went from free to, I thought there was talk of maybe seven to ten, and then maybe fifteen, and now it's up to twenty-five. And there was some talk about, really, it was just one board member.
Well, it's not even a board member, that's what I was gonna bring up, the person that wanted to give it to us is not a board member.
Who's like their public.
Right, he was.
Public, some public works, whether it was the head of it, or just one of, whatever, so, I mean.
But the ones who want to go ahead and sell it, that's the board?
Yes.
And is, and they're trying to determine a, a set amount, or?
I don't know if they've discussed it since, but that was what the issue was.
The other half is, will it fit in the garage down at the pump house?
Oh, they're gonna, can revamp the door probably in this.
No, those doors are shorter yet than the ones up here.
Cause these are old slider ones, they're short.
I know, but the ones down, down there are shorter.
They open, this way and roll up?
No way it'll fit down.
Yeah, it won't fit, but however, hasn't it been sitting outside all the time?
I mean, I've been thinking that, like, the thing is sitting outside in these pictures.
Do we want it closed up and embedded on a hundred-degree day with?
Well, there you go, there's that too, so.
When I looked at it, it was indoors, but the pictures that were sent to us originally are all upstairs, and it's in outdoors. Because they don't use it anymore, so it was kinda retired to the pine trees there. Uh, Lead has, they're having, and, uh, Co has.
Smart boards, is there?
We had first dibs on it. The new finance officer is the one that's saying we need.
City administrator.
Got in it.
It's the city administrator, not the finance officer.
Originally, the truck came from the city. Then it was wheeled to Custer. And then Custer decided that another municipality should own it. So they gave it to, actually, not gave, but it went to Hill City the next door. Okay, so, that, let me finish. That number that they have in it, uh, is roughly twenty-four thousand. Because they spent some money, big money on it, about eight thousand dollars along the way. And, um. Looking at what PACE charges, of course, that doesn't include cambering and stuff, you know, that's in that thirty thousand, so, you know, it's pretty. The, the cambering is just as important as the jetting, because if you can't see what's going on. The truck is worth twenty-four thousand dollars three times over, so. We know that the clutch on, on the main drive for the back is, uh. Upout, Sioux Falls, uh, company somewhere down there has worked on the truck before. Uh, I just kinda dropped the ball because there was no interest, I mean, we didn't. Anthony thought he knew where the money was, and he actually added another ten thousand, or whatever, to get it fixed, I doubt, I, I haven't looked to see what's the matter.
Okay, so Chuck, so to estimate the repair cost, you need to look at it and make sure, so. Part of what we need to do, after we find the price, is organize a time for you and, and your guy to go up and check on it. So we can get a good idea of the repair cost, we can add that to the purchase price, get an idea of what we're all gonna be in for it. Just so we have an idea of what we can be voting on, and we can start to earmark funds. I don't think there's any doubt that it's gonna be worth buying, that it'll pay for itself, and, I mean, a week or two of heavy use, but.
They kinda indicated that, uh, they weren't gonna sell it out for months. Even though there've been other municipalities that are trying to get hold of it.
Right.
Uh, so, we can't monkey too long, we gotta figure out what we're gonna do and get her done, because it could slip away.
Right, so, um, I mean, it sounds like Anthony right now is the liaison for this, is that correct?
Yes, he's.
So then I'll, I'll talk to him.
He's gonna plan the month.
I'll, I'll talk to him and see if we can get them to get solid on the price, send us a quote, at that point, I'll talk to you. When you figure out a time, you can go up and, uh, check it out, and then we'll get those numbers, and we'll figure out what we're gonna be all in for. Uh, Mark, did you have a question, comment?
I'm, I'm just curious, is this. Will this water jet and vacuum, is it the plus, or is it just the base?
It is a jetter truck.
And what, what's wrong with it?
Well, the clutch that runs the, the actual overhead boom, the actual back part of it. Uh, there's a secondary source of power there, and the clutch that engages this is, still works, but they say it's not, it's to the end of the adjustment. So there is an issue there, and I'd have to look at it to see what's involved, I can't imagine, of course, you know, I give two hundred and thirty dollars for a plastic cap today for a UVC. I said, you've gotta be drunk. But, you know, I don't know what the parts would go cost exactly, but I can, I can find out, I mean, we'll spend the time to look at it, see what's specifically wrong. Get a whole Sioux Falls that has worked on the truck in the past, and they did about eight thousand dollars worth of work to the truck and the thing, and like I said, it came from Rapid originally, I told them, I said, I've seen this truck before. Well, they welded, paid for it, whatever, it went to Custer. And to Hill City, so, the new finance officer is saying, you know, we have to at least get out of it what we paid for, what we got in it. So that's where the snag is, the, the department wanted to give it to us, so then all of a sudden, it went to twenty-five thousand dollars. Plus the repairs, so that's where it's at.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, let's just spend like maybe two more minutes on this, and then move on to the next one, so, uh, Mark?
I just, does it run enough to make sure it'll pull a vacuum still, that the tanks are sealed?
That part all good, the, the clutch that's running that big back part of it is, it's, it's in usable order right now, they just said that this has to be addressed if you're gonna use it very much.
Okay, uh, Shannon?
Um, so that gets us back to if it's not gonna fit in here. Do we go ahead and rent this out? And if this is that bit of a price, that includes eight thousand dollars of repairs is included in that. Perhaps maybe we wanna pour cement pad with a carport or something over it down.
I think the carport is probably, you know, yeah, I, I think that's fine, but.
I mean, it was kept inside before they quit using it, it was maintained in a, inside, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's another thing, if we need to, uh, revamp that building or make another one, that's another cost.
We don't want seals to dry out and whatnot, because we've left it out in the weather.
Alright, last comment, Linda?
I, I just think that it's something we need to, um, quickly check into, have Anthony quickly do it, and whatever needs to be done, find out what it's gonna cost, because. If somebody else is in there wanting it, Lead's a way bigger town than we are, and they probably have more money than we do, they have more tax base than we do. Um, I think we better get in there and get it done, if it works, and.
It's a good investment for our growing system.
Yep.
Okay, so let's put that on the next meeting agenda. Chuck, do you think you could peel off some time between now and then, after I talk to Anthony, to go check it out?
Sure.
In a week?
Saturday morning?
Bye there.
Do you want, you want me to go look at it?
I mean, yeah, I guess, you wanna go look at it?
Chuck's, Chuck's, I was supposed to go up with Anthony, and I dropped the ball, got sick when they went up there, but I'll go look at it, I did have your equipment for years.
Oh, okay, awesome, well, depending on when you go, maybe I could go with you too.
Buzzing or?
Yeah.
Something in the building that's been doing it for a couple of years.
Okay, well, we'll figure it out, so.
Then we have to do some research on that.
Yeah, alright.
Downstairs in the server, maybe?
So that was a good discussion on that, so, last item on the items of business, draft letter to city of Rapid City regarding the surplus Christmas decorations. So, um.
And this was Dan was, sorry, I have more information on this.
Yeah, would you like to talk about that, Dan?
Did you draft the letter?
Pardon?
Did you draft the letter? I'll prove it.
Wait, hey.
No, we'll use you guys' expertise on that, but.
Let's try to stick to raising our hands and stuff and keep this thing moving.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Scott Anderson is the one in charge of the city of Rapid City Parks, I know very well, um, they do have thirty of them for surplus. And it's a matter where I said, I know we want at least fifteen, maybe we want twenty, um, of them. But he's meeting with the city of Rapid City attorney this Friday, or the Friday next coming up here, and he would like a letter. Before then, so that he can go to the city attorney and say, we wanna surplus them, we got a community that wants them, I'd like to deal with this person. So if he has that letter, then before he meets this Friday, that would be excellent, and then we can go for it, and if you guys think we want twenty of them, or fifteen, since we have thirteen poles.
How many are available?
Thirty.
Why don't we take them all?
We don't have that many poles.
Well, I understand that, right now, we don't have that many poles, but why can't you put them on the, oh, cause they don't have power.
What are we talking about, candy canes, or?
I don't know what they are.
Panic pauses, or what?
Alright, Donna has her hand up.
So, are they looking for a price on this, or are they giving them, or they said?
Giving them.
Nice, Deb?
Well, I was just gonna say, maybe if they wanna give us thirty, that's fine, maybe some of them don't work, or aren't working, you know, and that's why they replaced all of them, you know, I mean.
Okay, Shannon?
Take them all.
Can it be as simple as Terry sending an email to their park and recs department, saying the town of Hermosa is interested in taking your surplus Christmas decorations?
I'm gonna give her Scott Anderson's cell number, so you can contact him for an email, forward it on, have our ample. Uh, if you wanna put it in there, we would surely accept the thirty of them, so we have extras, we just as well do that, I think it's a great idea.
At no cost, why not?
Well, and you never know if one's damaged, or doesn't work, you got spare, so then you got extras, so.
Okay. So, are we, are we able to take care of that with just an email from Terry, do we, do we require something more substantial?
Just a letterhead of the town of Hermosa, and that we wish to. Accept your surplus Christmas decorations that you have, and that we are very interested in them, cause they have to go into a municipality. They can't go to a private entity or anywhere else, so that's why they need a letter from us.
Alright, Deb?
And it might not hurt to have a vote.
Yeah, I, I'll make that motion to allow Terry to contact Rapid City, and then put a letter together. Stating our interest in their surplus Christmas decorations.
Okay.
Second?
Shannon, seconds. Okay, well, we had a pretty good discussion about that already, any final comments for anybody? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries? Okay, very good, and thanks for checking in on that for us, Dan.
Thank you.
And thank you, Terry, for taking care of that for us. Um, so now we're on to items from constituents, I'll go ahead and read the, the thing, it's a little bit different. Um, no action can be taken by the board on any issue related without being first placed on a future agenda to allow for proper notice. Reserved time for public comment is fifteen minutes. This is a time for citizens of the town of Hermosa, or properties of owner within the town limits, to express concerns or discuss issues having relevance to the town. Anyone wishing to address the town board during this time shall be asked to stand and identify themselves after being recognized by the board president. Each person will be allotted three minutes to speak, after these time limits are reached, all further commentary shall be made only with the chair's approval. So, uh, after introducing that, is there any items from constituent, or any constituents that would like to make a comment? Mr. Halsworth?
Thank you, Dan Halsworth.
Hello, man.
Super great night, all of you, I think you did a fantastic job, great discussion, great decision-making from all of you. I think sessions like this are phenomenal, so, my hat's off to everybody.
Thank you.
Yay, less than three minutes.
Your turn, Chuck.
Yeah.
Wait, we got.
You can carry on four and a half minutes, because you're taking us.
Sir, anybody else like to comment, any other constituents? Chuck?
I just wonder if anybody wanted an update on what's going on, the community room and all that.
Rhonda Anderson.
She might go.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think, I think that would, I guess I'd be apropos.
Is there some to report on?
Well, um, Cal Boom's been over a couple times, we can see what we're doing, and.
Is that why you're sunburned?
I'm, I think I'm just red, cause it's hot in here.
It is.
You know, we're gonna start setting the holes tomorrow, and everything else, so we're building it, we're starting it in shape, and once that's up, why, we got a tremendous amount of dirt to move in. And, uh, so, power's there, and water's there, and moving on. Building up, then we can, I believe, some of the stuff they brought in, I don't really wanna use it.
Okay.
Are we talking about the, the plant that makes the place smell?
No.
Not smell?
This treats the water, so that it's lined up, or whatever, we're getting permits, it, it could possibly, we need to create, uh. Hill City's fighting that, and so is Custer, and so Anthony's working on the permits, we just charged permits. This, this unit will treat, um, the water that's being, at, at this point right now, we're discharging from A to. um, the water that's being, at, at this point right now, we're discharging from A to B because we're full, so, that started today, and, um, um, so, you know, it's thrown over, so...
Could there be no spill over in the sea there?
What's that?
There's no spill over in the sea?
No, this water won't affect the ice. Thick, thick, it's gonna freeze again.
It's been a nice couple of days, right after freezing.
Yeah, I'm excited to get this thing up and running, because it's, it's something that we needed for a long, long, long time. It's gonna take quite a little, you know, they did quite a little damage while they moved it, and...
Really? Let's get a list of all that stuff that we need to cover, and just so we have it.
Yeah, but the guy that's, he's actually, that we bought it from, through whatever.
Right.
He's marking down all that stuff, because it's in his contract, it's gotta be operational. There are heating elements that are about six foot long, and it's in there, and, uh, so, those have been damaged in the building, the electrical part of it. So, you know, and these are important in the way that thing functions, because it has to heat the water to bring the temperature up to be able to treat the...
To do its master job.
The water, so...
Can I take a five-minute break before we...
Don't bring it in, because they're terrible.
Okay, yeah, we'll do a, we'll do a break before executive session, any more items from constituents? Nope, okay, trustee input, uh, we'll do Kent last, I was gonna have him make a, a quick comment on something, Linda?
Good, thank you.
Yep, yes ma'am, Erin?
Um, nothing for tonight, it's a special meeting.
Yep, extra special, okay, Donna?
Nothing.
No, Shannon?
I think the, the people attending, you all have good questions too, that make us think and rethink, and I appreciate all of your, your comments.
Yep.
I forget your name, I'm sorry too, the town, new girl, Hannah?
Alright, uh, Kent?
Ben here.
And about the jetting, Chuck, and Dan, you know, we always have to...
Um, I sent out an email to everybody earlier today regarding the vote last meeting regarding, uh, Jerry Stiles and prohibiting his attendance at future meetings. And, the, it, it simply, and I, and I apologize, it's my fault, I should've made sure it's properly noticed on the agenda. But, um, the word complaint was not sufficient to, um, be able to take an action, take an official action on. It, it should've said something specifically about, uh, the prohibition of, of a town member from the board, or specifically Jerry Stiles, something like that, and the, the legal standard is that it has to sufficiently describe it so that a person of average intelligence can determine what the vote is going to be about. So, um, with that, again, I apologize for that, um, I was, as far as flimsy excuses go, I was sick for like five days and didn't go out, leave out my house, whatever. Um, but, uh, so the next meeting, I'd, I'd like to put on the agenda a, uh, where the board rescinds the former, or the old, the previous vote, and then votes again on the issue. So, that's all I gotta say.
Okay, uh, Linda?
You'll have the wording correct for us, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kent, um, so let's, uh, do a five-minute break and then we'll do an executive session. So, uh, we'll be back here for the executive session at?
Eight come on.
No, we'll do it at eight forty-five.
Well, we have to have, just the...
Start to go in and then stop?
We do the recording to make the motion, and then we stop the recording for the session, right? And then, we'll do the recording when we come out of session. Okay, anyone wanna make the motion to go?
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session at nine forty, eight forty-six.
I'll second that.
Okay, Linda makes the motion, Donna seconds, uh, all, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make the motion to come out of executive session at nine twenty.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, uh...
It's a good thing that the call was ours.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, left executive session nine twenty PM, um, so, is it?
I make a motion, we go into the...
We direct Terry to that place now?
Make a motion, go back into the meeting?
No, we already did that.
Yeah, we did that.
So, I would make a motion to give Terry directive to advertise for law enforcement. Part-time law enforcement at, uh,
With the DTRs discussed?
Yeah, thanks.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Don't think so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and, uh, motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting at?
Nine twenty-one.
Nine twenty-one, any seconds?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, Linda seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.